Good afternoon. Are we on? Good afternoon, welcome to the October 24th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. If you have pagers, cell phones, or other electronic devices, if you would turn those off, or silence them now, we would certainly appreciate that. If you are not familiar with our practices and policies at the Planning Commission, on the back of the first page of your agenda is an explanation of some of our practices here. Although I doubt anyone has missed it, if you're here to talk to us about a case today and you are not the applicant, please complete one of these forms and give it to our staff and we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, commissioners, minutes of our October 10th meeting? Your approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes, and the minutes are approved. Janice? Thank you.
On continuance requests today, we have five uncontested requests for continuance. Item 15 is PUD 1507, request to continue until November the 14th. Item 27, C 6521, until November the 14th. Item 28, C 6496, until December the 12th. Item 29, C 6493, until December the 12th. Item 30, PUD 1483, has been withdrawn.
Did anyone come here today to talk to us about the items just read on our agenda, 15, 27, 28, 29, or 30?
No uncontested continuance.
We have a motion and a second to approve the continuance. Just cast your votes. Those are approved.
There are eight new requests for continuance. Item four is DA 23856. Item eight, PC 10355. Item nine, C 6519. Item 10, ABC 794. Item 11, C 6535, are all continued until November the 14th. Item 12, CE 855, request to continue until December the 12th. Item 20, PUD 1511, and item 21, PUD 1512, request to continue until November the 14th.
Eric, just give me a minute. Does anyone come down to talk to us today about items that were just read, 4, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 20, or 21? You're Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, sir.
If you'd come to the front for us, please. If you would, give me your name and address.
My name is Robert Mendoza. I live at 3801 South Henni Road, Choctaw, Oklahoma.
Now, the issue right now is the continuance request and whether you object to that or would come back when they want here to-
Yes, sir. The request is to defer the request to rezone from agricultural to residential. I was informed by letter of the application and that it was going to be heard by the planning committee on 12 September, and I showed up for the hearing only to find out that it was deferred until the 26th of September. I showed up on the 26th and expressed my protest for that recommendation, and the committee recommended that the applicant defer for a couple of weeks to modify the application to reduce the density from one acre lots to two and a half acres because the density was not supported by any of the resources out there. The hearing was deferred until 12 October, where it was deferred again until today. And today's agenda reflects that the applicant did modify his application and now is asking to further defer. And I respectfully request that the committee reject this request to defer as well as reject the application for rezoning, because it appears that the applicant is just trying to run me out of vacation time.
No, we will hear from the applicant who's asking for the continuance. Mr. Box?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. We just got involved as of yesterday, so it was our suggestion that we continue this at the next docket to be able to sit down and evaluate this, but we just got involved as of officially late yesterday, so we are the ones that are asking for this deferral.
Client made any attempt to change this application, change the density?
To my knowledge, no, but I haven't had a chance to sit down and meet with the protester and meet with my client to see if there's a possible solution available, but we intend to do that between now and the next hearing.
Well, it's troublesome a bit to me that we're on continuance number four and the applicant's just figuring out that he wants to pursue a different avenue.
Well, he didn't just decide to pursue. We suggested that rather strongly before.
By the way, quite a while back, I think.
That's correct, and he has done nothing in that regard, apparently, until this week, and he now apparently engaged Mr. Box. But I find that troublesome.
The issue that we're facing is, you know, our application is consistent with the area it abuts RA zoning, and that's all we're asking for, and so we need more time to do a bit of research and see what our options are.
I understand that, but at the previous hearing, I believe it was pointed out directly by Mr. Allen as well as myself, that this probability, this density is probably not appropriate there, whether there's RA in the area or not, and suggested to come back with something else. And it just appears that's fallen on deaf ears.
Well, I think that, given the opportunity to sit down with my client, we're going to address those concerns and see what modifications are available.
I received an email, and I guess it was from Joel Bryant.
Yes, sir.
And one of the things we were concerned with was the water-
Correct.
...quality and quantity. He sent me a email from Water Quality from the Gobber Wellington, and it states there's 5 million billion gallons of water in the Gobber Wellington, and that it will, it supports now 20 municipalities and 20,000 homes. That's one of the reasons why we are concerned with more water wells and more density in those areas. And I think that's one of the things that we stressed pretty strongly at the last meeting, that we would like to see less density in that particular development, even though that there is RA zoning around it.
And one of the things we've done, Mr. Allen, is we looked at that water quality report, and if you look at that report compared to other applications that we've seen in your ward, the gallons per minute are more than tripled and the quality is far exceeding. So-
We're kind of getting into the details of the application-
We're probably getting into the hearing of the thing. You know, I know, you know, I know that they've changed attorneys or representatives, if you will, but, you know, the gentleman's right. You know, we're working on his vacation time, and it was my understanding the reason why you asked for a continuance today was because the applicant wasn't available. Aren't you representing the applicant?
Right, but he would like to be here, and like I said, we just officially got hired yesterday.
Well, this is not Mr. Box's problem in terms of having just arrived on the scene, but I'm inclined to think we hear the case today, and if the applicant wants to refile it, if he's not satisfied with our response, he can do that.
That'd be my recommendation. Do we need a motion? Make a motion.
We don't, because it's on the, if we vote all of the continuances, well, we do, we'll take this one out.
Okay.
Eight and nine both are related. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Anyone else on, oh, Mr. Groves, I forgot.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Eric Groves. I'm an attorney. I represent Westbury South Neighborhood Association. I'm here to request a continuance on item 24, case number 6522, preliminary plat of Cottonwood Creek. I'm here to ask that it be continued to November 14. Here are the reasons. I think you're all familiar with this application, and you know that the preliminary plat as proposed includes holes 1 and 9 of the Westbury Golf Course and its driving range. If that land were to be platted and built out, the golf course would be pretty much not viable. It's not in the best of shape now. The way this got started was that the golf course is owned by Westbury Inc., a corporation that took bankruptcy. When it was in bankruptcy, it filed a motion with the court to sell off 40 acres of land to Chris White, who is a principal and the applicant here today, on the representation that the golf course would continue to operate. But that representation turned out not to be true. In the event, the court approved the motion, entered an order, cleared the land of all encumbrances, enabling the owners to give a warranty deed to Mr. White, which they did for 40 acres. Then the court dismissed the bankruptcy. Won't bother you with the details. That left Westbury Inc. in a position to sell off the golf course. It's heavily mortgaged, but the mortgagee has not filed foreclosure. So Westbury will have Louis Dakehill, the auctioneer, sell off the golf course on the 1st of November. The publicity from Mr. Dakehill says that he will sell the front 9 and the back 9 and the driving range. They'll try to sell them separately. If that doesn't work, they'll sell them all together. Of course, the front 9 are missing two holes, 1 and 9. My clients are trying to organize some investors to buy that golf course. Now, I'm not going to represent to the commission that their efforts will necessarily be successful. They have also had conversations with Mr. White, and they've said to Mr. White, "If we should be so fortunate as to acquire the golf course, would you consider selling its back holes 1 and 9?" And my client reported to me that Mr. White might be willing to do that. There's no deal, but he might. That would put the golf course back together. It is the anchor of the neighborhood. In the southwest sector, 1.46 percent of the land is dedicated to open space and recreational area, and we can't afford to let this golf course go by the board. It requires a good operator, and we invest close right now. You know, it's going to require some serious capital investment. But here's our problem. It goes under the hammer on the 1st. You meet again on the 14th. We want a chance to bid it in or otherwise acquire it. If the commission were to approve this plat, which I don't think it will, because it's efficient in a lot of respects, but if the commission should approve this plat, I think that's going to run off any potential investors that we have. So we think, given the total context, it's worth two weeks. Let my people have a chance at acquiring this golf course, for the good of their neighborhoods, for good of the southwest sector. But having a preliminary plat in place would work to our disadvantage, so this is anything but a frivolous request. I mean, the future of the golf course may ride on your decision today, so I ask that you continue it until 14 November.
Well, I'll defer to Buck. We have a huge number of people here today to hear this item and signed up to speak on this item.
Oh, may I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. That's, those are my clients.
Okay. Well, I figured they would be. Some of them, anyway. I hope they all pay you.
I hope they do, too. If we were to go forward, we would only have two speakers, me and one person in the neighborhood, so you don't have to worry about that. They're here to let you know that they're here and to let you know the level of their concern about this situation.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Chris White, 3608 Sage Trail Circle, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. So, yes, what Mr. Groves says is correct with regard to the golf course being for sale and how the property was acquired and all of the sort of that, but our position is that the sale of the golf course has little to do with the property that we have acquired in our plans, you know. One item that, I'm a member of Quail Creek Golf and Country Club and was also a member of Westbury, there are still 170 acres upon which to build an 18-hole golf course that would be available for anyone who wants to purchase the rest of the property. And Quail Creek, for example, is built on 135 acres. So the acreage is more than adequate to build a championship 18-hole golf course if one chose to do so. And, you know, our concern with the continuance is it would seem as if there's no end, because there likely could be a reserve that would allow the property to not be sold at auction on November 1st. And as far as we know, although we're willing to listen to the Westbury group that's trying to put together investors to buy the golf course, although we're willing to listen to them, it seems as if that, you know, they've had a number of years to try to work out a satisfactory new ownership to the golf course and weren't able to do so. And as of my meeting with them last week, of the $3 million-plus dollars that they felt that they needed, they had zero. So, you know, we just don't feel that continuing at this stage would gain anything. If it could, we wouldn't be opposed to it, but it just feels like that it would be a perpetual clock.
How does a two-week continuance hurt you?
What's that?
How does a two-week continuance hurt your position?
Well, you know, with development, as you well know, I mean, there's the timing, you know, there's a lot shortage in the area. We want to get moving as quickly as possible. You know, the development, the return on economics in development is largely related to how quickly you can turn the development. So, you know, we feel that it's, that we need to get started as quickly as possible, as with any development.
Thank you. Buck?
Chris, you said you had, you've met with the folks from Westbury and had discussions about them buying part of your, the land that you bought-
Correct.
-apparently. I guess holes 1 and 9, I think it is. You haven't made a deal on that, I'm assuming you just had a discussion about that?
Correct.
Trying to, I'm trying to think through how either continuing this or not continuing this affects their position, and if it affects their position, I don't know. I think everyone out in that area, including Chris, would love to see Westbury Golf Course stay Westbury Golf Course. I've played on it many times, and I know Chris has, and I know, you know, many of these people have as well. You know, we've got a dilemma there that, right now, we don't have a golf course. So I would like to see, you know, all the effort we can put into saving it, if possible, and obviously we have an auction scheduled, or supposed to happen on November the 1st, which will kind of tell us something. We're not sure what at this point, because it may be sold and it may not be sold. We don't know. So, Chris, I mean, you know, as far as continuing this thing for a couple of weeks, I mean, is there any way you guys would agree to that? Trying to help, you know, I understand you guys' side of it as well. I mean, I do. And you've continued it once, I know, already, and we appreciate that, and-
Well, if the two weeks would give them ample time to satisfy any and all opportunity that they have to purchase the golf course and make offers to us, if two weeks could actually get something done in that area, then maybe we could consider that. But it just doesn't, but only if they're not able to do so, it would seem that the right thing for them to do would be to drop the opposition to what we're doing, which is a development that really is well in line and actually has many amenities that their current development does not even have. So we, you know, if they would be willing to do that, then we'd be willing to continue. You know, it's interesting-
In that regard, let me interrupt you for just a moment.
Sure.
Another thing comes to mind, Chris. Mr. Groves indicated, and I'm not trying to get into hearing the case at this point, Chairman, but Mr. Groves indicated that his clients perceive many deficiencies in your existing plat, so if we hear it today, they are going to protest those deficiencies. Should we continue it for two weeks, it may, that would give you the opportunity, if you so elected, to get with them, to find out what some of those problems-
Oh, we believe we've answered any-
Oh, you've already, you've been there, done that.
We're ready to, you know, as far as the merits of the development, but make no mistake, we are only standing here today with protests because of the fact that 261 people who signed that protest feel that they were in error by not supporting the golf course and allowing it to die, and now they're trying to, instead of living with the reality that it's gone, they're trying to resurrect that. And in reality, if those 261 people would have paid membership dues to Westbury Country Club, we wouldn't be, I wouldn't be standing here today. It'd still be a golf course, it'd still be in that area. I retained a membership there. If the 261 folks that signed that sheet of paper would have done so, we wouldn't have been able to, we wouldn't have the opportunity to buy any property. And, you know, so that's the case. I mean, retroactively, you know, they're trying to get out, get beyond those consequences. And like I said, and I agree with Buck, I mean, I hope that, you know, I had hoped that they could get that done, that they could get the golf course bought, get investors, but, you know, quite honestly, you approve today, we can't move dirt for a number of weeks anyway, so we'd still be willing to talk with them about buying our land, you know. So an approval from you does not take off the table the opportunity for the golf course, you know, the group that wants to save the golf course to raise money to buy the golf course back. We'd still be willing to do so up until we were fully ready to begin moving dirt.
Okay. Janice, did you have a thought before we take? Okay. Any other comments, commissioners, decide on the continuance? We're clearly going to hear this one way or another, either now or two weeks from now, because Mr. Groves is going to have his issues with the plat.
Yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to continue it for two weeks. I haven't heard a hard deadline, frankly. I do agree with Mr. White that, you know, two weeks is all. I don't, you know, if we haven't gotten any meaningful, I think we hear it in two weeks one way or the other. You know, if you've got problems with the plat, you should be able to address those in two weeks. I'm not convinced that an application that's got 11 TEs is ready to go, is not without problems, but, you know, we've had that before. So I think my inclination would be, speaking from myself only, two weeks, hear it one way or the other in two, and then-
Well, if you speak for yourself only and make that into a motion, we'll vote.
That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this for two weeks, and we will hear it then. Cast your votes. That's approved.
May I vote for my own motion?
We'll see you in two weeks, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, have we continued everything else? Where are we on our agenda?
We have the remainder of the uncontested continuances. Are there any other requests or any other discussion of the uncontested continuances?
Could I request that the item that is not going to be continued at least be put towards the heel of the docket to allow at least the engineer to get here?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other comments on the uncontested continuances, I'd move their approval deleting from the list red, number eight and number nine.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances, deleting items eight and nine. Cast your votes, and those are approved.
No other continuance requests, we'll move on to the consent docket. Two items on consent today. Item one is C 6502, and item two, PUD SP 1481.
I should clarify, although most of the people are out of the room, November 14th is three weeks, not two. It's the next meeting. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on number two, so could we just hear it in place? I just have a question about the plan.
Okay. Is the applicant for number two here, case number two? Mr. Williams has a question.
Good afternoon, I'm Kendall Doyle, Crap and Toll, representing the applicant, so be happy to answer any questions you've got.
Okay. Kendall, in your original site plan?
Yes.
When we've, when we approved it, we had three identified commercial areas. We had one on the east side, one on the west side next to the bike company, and then two on each side of the drive entrance into the development. It seemed like this plan here has eliminated the one on the west side, the commercial plat on the west side, and it has elongated the commercial along 122nd.
Right, and I'm not, wasn't really a part of the rezoning application, so staff can correct me, but I believe that from the time that the PUD made it to council, in regards, if you recall, there were some protests, and I think that was kind of the final version that council approved in relation to cooperation with the protesters.
Okay. Well, you know, some of the controversy, they wanted more commercial along 122nd, so I guess they consolidated it. It was wrong, but we approved.
That's my understanding, and it was, again, it was not, it was generated in regards to the protests around it and continuing, trying to work through that process.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is there somebody that can give us some insight on that? Is that generally what you understood also?
Right, there was continued negotiation between the applicant at the time and the protester to the north, between planning commission and council, and it was amended on the floor to city council to delete the commercial portion on the far west end and incorporate it into the one along 122nd Street, to give the people to the north more of a buffer from the apartments.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. A motion on the consent docket?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
On items requiring separate vote, item three is V-145803, application by GMV Homes requesting a variance to the subdivision regs regarding a certificate of occupancy at 11,001 San Lorenzo Drive in Rio de Bello addition, section two.
Is the applicant here? Just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Randy Valdez, 2280 Jeff Place, Tuttle, Oklahoma.
Okay. You're the builder?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've seen a number of these Commissioners. It's just another in a line. Move approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item three, which is a variance. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item four has been continued. Item five is C-6536. This is the final plat of Adcare Quail Creek Edition, Ward eight.
All right, I'm sorry, I hate to ask, but on the item that we just approved, are we making any progress to the big picture there?
Yes, the, all the improvements have been installed, except for there's a drainage swell, and they're working on that now. So, all the other major improvements.
So, yes, we are inching forward, okay.
Charles Duncan, 1006 Raleigh Circle, Norman.
Your client now is agreeing to comply with the sewer and water hookup?
Correct.
We do have someone signed up. Charles Duncan?
This is, this is me.
Oh. I guess we didn't need that from you, since you're the applicant. Okay, in that case, we have a variance to TE3.
I'd move easement variance on TE3.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. That's approved.
We'll approve the application.
Second. Guess who's guilty? I didn't think I had it with me. We're ready to go. Motion and a second to approve item five. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item six is ABC-795, application by TCE Original for an ABC2 at 6,900 North May Avenue, Ward two.
Steven G, Phil Smur, I represent TCE Original. Happy to take any questions.
Is there anyone signed up?
No.
I, you know, I have a little bit of initial concern about this, just based on the map, until I went out and saw what it is. This is where Ted's Cafe Escondido is. And if you look down the back alley of that property, which is the side that's closest to the residences, it's just, you know, absolutely clean. It's completely, you know, perfectly done. And I think, you know, unless there's somebody here that's actually, you know, concerned enough to object to it, I'm going to move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item seven is SPD-733, an application by Custom Composites, rezone 1,001 East Madison from C3 to SPD-733 in Ward seven.
Hi, I'm Russell Boyd, 2101 Rambling Road, Edmund.
Commissioners, no one has signed up?
I have, I have one confirmation.
Sure.
A couple of years ago, I think we approved a PUD for the tire shop on the corner of 23rd, and with the improvements we're trying to make, we were asking to plant some trees and.
Yes, sir.
Bidify more, and I would like to see some trees planted along Kelly.
Absolutely, and we have that in our master plan, and we'll provide that to the building committee.
Okay. And along, and along Madison too?
That'll be, that'll be on the south side along Madison and on the west side along Kelly.
Right. And what type of fence are you proposing for the screen off your?
We don't have any fence designed yet, but under this, it completely tells us, you know, no metal fences or anything, so we'll just have to leave that to our architect. But we're completely open to whatever the city would propose.
I'd like some trees and some, because that's a really, it's a closed street, so if we get the trees and then along the fence, we get some, some type of shrub, so it'll make a soft screening at some point. Maybe we can get with staff to come up with some type of a plan that'd be acceptable to accomplish that.
Now, the only thing that we would maybe ask is, on the west side, we had asked for 15-foot off of our property line, and that came back to us as 17-foot, and I don't know if that's something that we can change today, or would that be a?
That's kind of a standard.
Standard for right-of-way, isn't it?
Seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm moving to approve with the amendments to the landscaping requirement to trees along Kelly, give it to staff on that, and some landscaping along the fence, what type of fence you put up. I know they say you can't put an iron fence up, and I assume because it will not do, it will not be a solid screen, metal, so if you do that, we'll move to approve it.
I just have one question. Where's, where's that? It's got outdoor storage in it, right?
I'm sorry?
You're asking for outdoor storage?
No, no, we're going to build a building where the old church.
Just a building?
No. Office and warehouse.
All right, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
I wasn't clear on that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Item seven is approved. Thank you.
Items eight and nine, we have moved to the heel. Item 10, 11, and 12 have been continued. Item 13 is CE-835, application by Rico LLC to close a portion of Broadway Place in Ward six.
See ya.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I'll hold off. Here on behalf of the applicant, also with me is Mickey Clag, Tom Davis, Chris Fleming, and Sam Gresham. This is a case that has been continued for quite some time. It's a case that, as of the last time, there were some commitments made from our side, and at the request of the planning commission, we continued it to show you a new exhibit, come up with a new legal description, showing exactly what our intent is in this application. Even before that, if we go back, I think, close to a year now, this application was heard before the downtown design review committee. At that time, it was our intent to close and vacate all of Broadway Place and 11th and 12th. At that time, that commission voted to approve our application in its entirety. Since that time, we've now pared it down, and what you see before you in the exhibit that is being passed around, as well as what we have here, is a visual description in color-coded fashion to hopefully make it easy on everybody to understand exactly what this application is. What we're proposing is to withdraw from this application the legal description that we gave you. So, essentially, 24 feet up and down Broadway Place will be withdrawn from the application and remain a public street. You can see that in green on this exhibit, everything in green is not in this application and will remain open, a public street. What you see in, I guess, pink or crosshatched, is the portion of the application that we still would like approval for. At the last hearing, the protesters' main concerns seemed to be access to their location south of us and parking. And our intent with the modified plan is, with the 24 feet, they now have access. Anybody traveling in public, whether it's us, anybody else, or any individual coming to the flower store, will be able to come from 13th down Broadway Place on that 24-foot street. It will allow both a north and southbound flow of traffic. On the parking, there will still be parking in the area that we proposed to close and vacate until the time in which a building would be built. But outside of the area to be vacated, we went and looked at parking in the area, and what we found was, there is an excess of 50 to 70 spaces available for the public outside of the area that we are proposing to close and vacate. So, we feel that this application has now been whittled down to a point that it satisfies concerns of the protests. They still have north and southbound access up and down Broadway Place. There is ample parking in that area, and if you've driven around that area during the day, you know that that's the case. So, even if we were going to take out the parking that's in our closed and vacated portion, there'd still be ample parking for the public. So, it is our hope and desire that these two modifications will allow this application to go forward, allow a great local business to stay in the area, and allow them to plan for the future and do the things that they would like to do. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mickey and allow him to explain why removing these 24 feet will allow them to plan for the future and do the things that they wish to accomplish.
David, before you do that, who owns the 50 to 70 parking spaces you make reference to, and where are they?
Those are all, in some of the pictures, they're around.
I'm looking at them.
Around the circle, they're up and down 11th, 12th, so the city or the public would own those. Those are not parking lot spaces. We did not count parking lot spaces. We counted parking along the circle, along 11th, and along 12th.
And the parking that you're showing on, let's say, between 11th and 12th, and 12th and 13th, west of Broadway Place, that all belongs to Rico and is used by the dealership, is that correct?
Correct, and that's not included in the number that I told you.
Okay.
I removed the parking that's in the vacated area in that number.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Correct. Mickey Clag, 4,700 Haregate Drive, Norman, Oklahoma. You know, this is, this item's been before this commission for quite some time. We've negotiated several issues, and so, but I think this will get us, not everything we wanted, but this is a very workable solution. The main thing is, you know, we're trying to run several businesses, three automobile dealerships, actually four, from this site. What brought this about is we wanted to add another franchise, and during the course of this, we lost it, but now I think with this plan, we can get it back. It is related to Mercedes-Benz. It's not a big high volume, but it is very complementary to what we're doing now. And that's what we, we want to be able to control this a little bit better, the street, because this, this street, Broadway Place, going north-south, we control all the property with the exception of one. We do lease one from Mr. Hurley with an option to buy, which won't be affected, or will be very little affected by this plan. But we need to, you know, running a business is dynamic. We're constantly needing to adjust and change, and by getting this vacation of this property will allow us to change the curb cuts, the parking configurations, things like that along Broadway Place. I think we've submitted parking, or traffic counts that indicate that this road is really not used very much after our visits, before our business is open, and after the business is closed in the evening. Very small traffic count, so hopefully, this satisfies everybody, and it will work for us.
If I come in, was my Ugo, can I park on Broadway Place in one of these angled parking spaces, or are they exclusively for the dealerships? How will?
No, no, I mean, no, it's just whoever wants to park there. They won't be dedicated, they won't be signed, they'll just be striped, so just, you know.
Okay.
I mean, we want to make it easy for people to come and visit our business, but they won't be, you know, right now, you know, if a brand-new car is dropped off there and parked there, we get a ticket for not having a proper tag. So, you know, those are the kind of issues we want to try to get out. But no, they're not going to be designated parking along Broadway Place.
Okay, before we hear from protesters, Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Clag or Mr. Box?
If I could address one more point. One of the issues that the protest has raised is that our 24-foot street is somehow inferior, and they reference a subdivision regulation. What that is referring to is a new street. This won't be a new street, this will be the same street that's there now. There are certainly streets less than 26 feet all over the city, and in fact, I believe there was a push or a movement at some point recently from planning to have the minimum street be 24 feet rather than 26. So, we think that the 24 feet is certainly inappropriate with.
Okay, Kelly Work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kelly Work, and I am an attorney representing the Oklahoma Flower Market and the Hurley Family Trust. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, Oklahoma City. We remain opposed, this item was heard, as you all will recall, on the 26th of September, and then was continued at the conclusion of that hearing, but the Flower Market remains opposed to the request to close what now would be 70% of the existing right-of-way. So, they're, what they're proposing to do is to vacate 56 feet of the 80 feet of existing right-of-way of Broadway Place. So, it would be reduced down to a 24-foot-wide strip of right-of-way. And just to be clear about what the subdivision regulations require, what the subdivision regulations say is that for a local urban street, which this would be, the minimum right-of-way required is 50 feet. Their, the concepts got mixed up a little bit there, I think, in Mr. Box's comments. The 26 feet is the minimum paving width for a urban local street. So, there's minimum right-of-way required of 50 feet, minimum paving required of 26 feet with curb and gutter. So, the, if this street is reduced down to 24 feet, you're essentially going to have something that's about the width of an alley. So, it would permit access, yes, from the north end to the south end, but the existing on-street parking that is available there today for use by the public and is used by the public would be gone. That property would be owned by the applicant and would be subject to their control. And they have shown a plan that they provided to us, where they're showing angled parking along each side of Broadway Place as it goes up north and south, and then up closer to 13th Street on the west side, they were showing some parallel parking. But the commission and the city needs to understand and have it be clear that that property, if this application is approved as proposed today, that property would be owned by the applicant. It would be subject to their exclusive use and control, and they could choose whether or not to allow other persons to park there, and if they, if they choose to, can put up signs that say this is car dealership parking only, and it's not available to public use. That would be something that would be entirely within their control. They've made reference to their issues with having vehicles being ticketed that are parked on the public street, and yes, as I understand it, if there is a vehicle that's parked on the public street that does not have a valid tag, then that vehicle's going to be ticketed if one of the, of the meter patrol people go by. But it seems to me this is an excessive measure to take to vacate 70% of this street that is used and needed by these businesses in the area. And in order to solve that problem, it just seems to me that there are other means that this applicant could take to address the problem of having untagged cars being parked on the street, receiving tickets from the city of Oklahoma City. The, we had suggested to the applicant and to the commission that their plan that they showed, and early on, the applicant was talking about the need to do this so they could do expansion of buildings. Well, the only expansion that they've shown on their plan is a 20-foot-wide addition to the Jaguar Volvo building there on the south end on the east side of Broadway Place. Well, it would, it would not be necessary to vacate 56 feet of Broadway Place in order to build that. to build that 20-foot addition. Our suggestion was that the east 20 feet of Broadway Place be vacated so that it would be then reduced down from 80 feet to 60 feet. It would permit them to do the addition that they have shown on their plans, they desire to do, but it would leave available for public use the remaining right-of-way along Broadway Place, both for access purposes and for parking. And the development pressures are growing in this area. There's been increased activity, you've got more activity that's occurring, commercial restaurants at 10th and Robinson. So we're seeing an increased use of the available on-street parking during the business day, and it is becoming ever more in demand, and it's becoming tighter. And so these business owners, the Oklahoma Flower Market and others in the area, do not want to lose this available on-street parking and have it be subject to the exclusive control of one property owner in the area. The additional issue which was discussed at the last meeting is that it's premature, in our view, for a decision like this to be made when the, on the horizon is the street car implementation. The plan was approved in September, and it calls for the street car route to extend up Broadway and go west across 11th Street, over to, cross to Robinson and on to the west. And so that is going to have a significant impact on this area. I think that's part of the thinking of this applicant in making this request, but we feel that it's not an appropriate decision for the commission and the city to make, given those plans for the street car and the current needs and future needs of the businesses in this area. We've got, as I mentioned before, we have 18 employees. We have been at this location for now over 58 years, and we hope to be there many more. But we need, for the continued success of our business, to continue to have the open access along Broadway Place and the available public parking. So we would ask that you not allow the vacation of 56 feet of the right-of-way of Broadway Place and reduce it down to this proposed 24-foot strip. Thank you very much.
Any questions of Mr. Work, commissioners?
I have one question. And I know it's been stated before, but what is the actual paving width of Broadway Place right now? Not the right-of-way, but the paving?
I haven't measured it. I heard reference made to about 50 feet, but I...
The actual...
That comment was made at the last meeting, so I think there's about 50 feet of paving that is existing currently. 80 feet of right-of-way, 50 feet of paving.
Thank you. Thank you. Gary Taft?
Yes, my name is Gary Taft. My address is 1324 North Robinson. We're Flora &amp; Hardy Florists. We're on the corner of 13th and Robinson, basically. Our issue is, we moved in 15 years ago, we came into the downtown area, and parking was never an issue. We're on, to us, to the business I own, we are on the outskirts of downtown. We haven't had to deal with parking issues at all. But as Mickey stated here, you know, everyone's developing. We've put apartments in our building, we've brought in tenants, the building beside me has put in a restaurant and salons, and even Bob Howard, the Mercedes used dealership was added on at one time. It was vacant. So we've all done things, you know, with the help of the city also, to develop this area, and this area is growing. So when it grows, you're going to have, I call them growing pains, you know, there's scenarios that come up, that come along with it that you don't plan on. If you look on the north side of 13th Street, on each side of the garage loft apartments, there's two big sections of property there that's open. It's inevitable, that's going to be developed. We're running, you know, they're running out of space, they develop the hospital, the traffic's going to pick up on 13th. We're running into new issues, and with the possibility of development across 13th, we really don't want to see any parking given up, any space give up, because that'd definitely be used. And then beside the Oklahoma Flower Market, there's a building there that's vacant. If they renovate that building, you know, it'll need to be traffic through there. So there's a lot of situations, and it may not be today, you know, but in the future, there will be something in those, in those, on those properties that will bring in, you know, they're large properties. So there'll be a lot more people in the area. Our problems of parking have just now started. This is, this is small. I have to deal with the other restaurant people in the restaurant on their iPads, and the ladies in the salon staying, you know, for several hours along the small, the very few parking spots we have. But that's the price, and we've all, we've all brought this into our area. Everyone has updated buildings and renovated buildings and brought people in, and that's just, that's just going to be part of it. So I oppose on, you know, closing any of these streets off. This needs to stay a thorough street. We just, you know, it's vital to have those.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Taft, commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could address just one point. Mr. Work said that this, this would in effect become the size of an alley. The size of an alley is 20 feet, and what we're proposing is 24 feet. So this would provide the thoroughfare that the last individual did desire. And just for reference, the passing aisles in a parking lot are typically 22 feet, and like I said, this is 24. So it's in excess of that, which we think will provide for plenty of maneuvering ability for north and southbound traffic.
Can I speak to you? No, I have a question. Sorry. Our staff report, David Buck just pointed out to me, I'll give him credit for this, says, I don't know if this, has this been updated since, for the new application, because about their objection to the closure regarding access and then traffic says, "There's insufficient information available at this time for us to adequately assess traffic impacts and check site distances." And so Fire Marshal's Office objects. So, is this current? JJ, can you give us...
The latest amendment was made well after the staff report was prepared, so no one has seen the new...
What were the travel lanes, JJ, in the analysis they did? In other words, fire and traffic?
I believe it's zero. I believe what they reviewed was us seeking to close the entire...
Correct.
...street.
Okay.
Oh.
If our original application was to close and vacate 11th, 12th, and...
Believe me, we all remember the original application.
Well, I just had, before David wants to speak again, but as a general matter, I don't know why, I mean, one, I'm in favor of allowing the expansion of the business, the car dealership. I think they're valuable assets to that part of town. I don't think anybody disputes that. But I do think we ought to, on the other hand, as a matter of policy, I'm not necessarily in favor of giving up right-of-way or city property when others don't necessarily, everybody agrees. I think Kelly's argument is somewhat persuasive to me that I'm for it, but I don't know that is 24 feet the right number? It seems like, if you look at the diagram, it looks like a 2/3, 1/3 split there. I mean, two pinks, one green. So, you know, if I'm kind of looking at it in that context, is that the minimum? Because I don't think we should be in the habit of giving up more than we need to.
Well, in that regard, you all know how I feel about closing streets. I'm just not, I'm in favor of closing streets. That said, this particular street, when you look at it, first of all, what is it? It's a half-block street. The grid is Broadway-Robinson. Now, why would we have, and who in their right mind, would put a half-block street for two and a half blocks with an 80-foot right-of-way?
Well, I think that was a mistake. I agree with you there.
Well, it wasn't a mistake, Mike. Why that happened is if you go back to when it was done, we were a streetcar city, and this is the streetcar place where they, they used that right-of-way for that. That's long gone. I'm troubled by this application from a couple of standpoints. One, it's a moving target. It's incessant. Every time we hear it, there's a new issue and, and somebody wants to change something else. I was opposed to this application when we were closing the east-west streets. I had problems with creating a problem with the grid. This does not create a problem with the grid. The initial complaint was, well, we need access from 13th Street, which I still don't fully understand because of Robinson now being two-way and all that. That said, this provides for access from 13th Street, and now it's, well, now that we're basically getting what we asked for, oh, wait a minute, we may not have, we may lose control of the parking. I think we beat this horse virtually to death, and it needs to move on.
Well, I also think that 24 hour, 24-foot width, in a sense, is a traffic calming device. Nobody's going to speed through here anyway.
There is no volume of traffic there anyway. We've seen the traffic study. What we didn't see from the traffic study was how much of that traffic was generated from these car dealerships, which one would think would be the vast majority of it, either the dealership employees or customers bringing, picking up cars. That said, even though the gross numbers on traffic, the traffic volume...
500 vehicles a day or 24-hour period or something, as I recall the number. What about the parking?
I mean, is there any way that we can limit them from putting signs up there that says it's parking for that dealership only?
No, no, if it's, if they vacate it, it becomes their property.
That couldn't go along with the PUD then.
Not a P, well, this is just a zoning application.
But the next...
It's just, the application closes through the street.
Yeah.
So if they brought it in as a PUD, could it be done that a way? No, it could be.
If they wanted to do that.
I have the same question as Jim had, because when they made the presentation, they said that the parking, the diagonal parking would not be limited just to their customers. Everybody would have access to the parking. But if they're going to own the property, how do you enforce that? How do you...
That's the only way you could enforce it, and if, you know, legally, we could do that, you know, the PUD would be the right way to go.
Well, the only thing I can tell you by way of history is we suggested that, what, a year and a half ago, Mickey, and the applicant was not interested in doing an S-PUD, which is what actually was discussed in our first meeting with them. Although this is a much...
It's a better application.
Much different, better application than what we heard.
Frankly, I think it's a process of us pushing back that's caused the application to get better.
True.
And the reaction of the neighbors, which is not unusual, I don't, you know, it's just, it's part of the process.
Even if they agree to the parking, you know, they can sell the thing, and then the people that buy it, you know, can say, no, you can't park there, that's only for us.
And that is true, but we would submit that there's ample parking outside of the area that we seek to vacate. Just in our quick estimate, when we drove around, there are somewhere around 50 to 70 spaces that are public, open spaces, and that number does not mean, does not include anything in the park that we are asking to close and vacate. So we think there is ample parking for the area.
Well, one thing, one thing we're experiencing and continue to experience in our urban setting is a lack of parking. Look, we put in a parking garage right up over here, we've got parking garages going up. So I would think as much parking as we can leave available for the public. I'm not opposed to the reduction in doing this, but if it could be left, or if everybody could park on it, it would be good, in my view.
Right. I mean, I don't have, I haven't heard a persuasive argument why 24 feet is needed for the business, Mickey. I mean, I know that you want it, but I haven't heard, your expansion is X amount, and I understand that, but I don't have a real clarity as to, as to the wheel drivers for the business to why it's only remaining at 24, when we've got 80. I think 80 is too much, not sure that 24 is the right answer.
My name is Tom Davis. I live at 11916 slash Pine Drive in Edmond, Oklahoma. I am the general manager and operating partner for all those dealerships. I want to make it very clear, I want the public to come in and park in those spaces. This is a detailed plan to expand the parking adjacent to the dealership. There is nothing else there but us. There's no other business, no other, nothing. It's us. We're trying to expand by creating that extra spot. When the Jaguar is extended, we're going to lose all the doors that we now have to keep open on the end of the street. Right now, it's garage doors to service our customers. We're going to eliminate those doors and put cross parking in there to get us more parking on both sides of the street. We're going to move, there are two, there are two fire hydrants right next to each other, and we're going to actually pay to move one out to the corner so we can put more parking on that side of the street. And that's all on the end of this block that we're talking about. This whole thing that we're discussing is to create more parking. Mr. Hardy's flower shop is around the corner on the other side. He purchased a building that had very little parking in front of it. He's talking about coming over a block. He is now parking on us and has been for a long time, and we're glad to be good neighbors to him. But he's a long ways away. What he's experiencing is other businesses moving into his area. It has nothing to do with us. And by opening those streets up, the last thing in the world am I going to do is say, you can't park your Yugo here, because I want to take that Yugo on trade, sir. I want you to come up and buy cars.
We can make a deal.
We can make a deal. If you have a Yugo, you need me. The traffic, we have more trucks that come in and out of there than has ever been described as group. Fellas and ladies, I have, every single night, I have tractor-trailers that pull down in there that have to have access to all the backs of these buildings. They literally have keys to my buildings. They open them up and deliver all the parts on huge crates that slide in. There's no way in the world I'm going to keep them out of there at night. That's when they come. I've been there for over a decade, and Mike and I are very good friends. We have lunch together from the Hurleys, a good guy. We have a great relationship. He buys all his family cars from us. This is not a big feud between us. His trucks rarely, I have saw them one time since the last meeting, come across 11th. I also want to say, if you look at 11th, what they're proposing, it runs into the church on the next block, squarely into the church. It's not going there. It runs, that street runs squarely into the Baptist Church. They're not going to make that jog, and who are the people going to go see? From Broadway, across 11th Street, all there is is us, the dealership. Our customers are not going to ride the trolley, and they're not going to go to church, unless it's Sunday, and that's not going to matter to me because I'm not there, we're closed. And those traffic reports, I'll invite all of you, including Kelly, to come there at night and show me who's coming to the dealership and down those streets when we're not open. I've got news for you, you're going to be lonely. I have 24-hour security, and there's nobody but homeless people walking down those streets, unless it's our delivery people or our guards. In the numbers, the traffic counts, if you look in the evenings, most of those numbers as you see is my security vehicle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to make this any longer, but I do want to add one thing since we're talking about parking. Our company is building a parking garage, five-story structure at 10th and Broadway, half a block off Broadway, just behind Mr. Hurley's business. So we're adding 285 parking spaces to the area. So, you know, with the, with what we're adding here, on-street parking, what we're adding there, we should not be adding, even though we're adding additional development, shouldn't be adding... be adding pressure on the existing parking.
Okay. All right, Kelly, one more time, here.
This request may help with the demand for the parking garage, I suppose. I wanted to just comment about the, what Mr. Davis mentioned. I mean, if the, if they are, their intention is, as they say, as Mr. Davis just said, as Mr. Claggs said earlier, that these parking spaces will remain open for public use, well, then there is no reason to not have them be within public right-of-way. So the public street should remain. They can install their angled parking spaces along the street. That will ensure that those spaces will remain available for public use. Let's narrow down the right-of-way to allow the building expansion that they have proposed, but keep the parking spaces that they say will remain open to public use, keep them within the public right-of-way, that way that will be ensured. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry, just real quick. You know, they're talking about the street being 20-foot wide. These trucks come in, or 24, these trucks come in during the afternoon, not always at night, and offload cars between 13th and 12th. There's no way traffic can go down the street with a semi sitting there and a car going right, you can barely do it now. So I just want to let you know, that's not wide enough to offload cars and have traffic going up and down the road with a semi in the middle of the street.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, discussion, motion? I agree with Commissioner Gales. It's time to move on. Well, I've said pretty much, I don't know that 24 is the number. Once again, I'm not in, it's a policy matter. I'm not in favor of giving up city streets. I think 80 feet is way too big a right-of-way in that particular area. I agree with all the statements about traffic mostly generated by the building, by the dealership. I don't have any, those facts are not necessarily in dispute. For me, it boils down to a policy matter, quite simply. A, I agree with Nick's policy. I'm not in favor of closing public streets. B, in this particular case, I think it's rational to shrink down the right-of-way, but I don't think 24 feet in this particular circumstance is wide enough, given, even though there isn't a lot of traffic, other than that is generated by the dealership, the nature of the traffic that is generated by the dealership during the day is somewhat compelling. And 24 feet, I get it, it's a parking lot access beneath it. I just think, I think we ought, our policy ought to be in favor of, if we do these things, that they should be not the greatest, but the least. And again, I haven't heard a compelling business case why 24 feet is the number, other than we'd like to have it, frankly.
I believe that 24 feet came up in our last hearing as a suggestion from some of the protestors. You could ask Mr. Box where they got that number, but that's what I recall. If 24 is not good, then my suggestion is, what is good? Because, like I said before...
Yeah.
We need to move forward.
I agree. I don't want, I want to move it along. I think we've got a very different application than when we started. I think that we've had a process that's involved protestors, staff, and commission. And I think we've got something that is, if not perfect for everybody, a good balance compromise. So that's my comment.
I'm going to make a motion, see where it goes. Move approval of the application.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the application. Cast your votes, and it is approved.
Item 14 is PC 10356, application by Norman Stinchcomb to rezone 9949 West Britton Road from PUD 902 to R1 Single Family in Ward 1.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. This is a rezoning of attractive land that was part of a bigger zoning, if you'll recall back when there was going to be a tech development in this area. And so this rezoning is going to be in line with the development to the north, which are lots that are minimum half-acre lots because there's no sewer that can be gravity-toed. So we agree with the staff's single technical evaluation, which is more appropriate for a plat, but we'll include that on the plat, the side triangle. But we agree with everything else.
Commissioners, no one signed up? I'm going to approve it. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item 15 has been continued. Item 16 is PUD 1504, application by Trinity Baptist Church to rezone 624 North Cemetery Road from AA Agricultural and PUD 1038 to PUD 1504, Ward 3.
Good afternoon. I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. And I believe you all recognize this application. It was on a couple of weeks ago, and it was continued in order to have another meeting with some of the adjacent property owners. And that meeting did take place. Phil Hagan from our office represented it, and I think Commissioner Powers was also there, so we appreciate her being there. I also know that there's a couple of neighbors, Kim Heaton and I think James Cross are here, so they may choose to speak in a little bit. But it's my understanding that from that meeting, that it was a good meeting, that most of the concerns were addressed. I do think that the neighbors still have a couple of things that, just for clarification, and then obviously they can speak to any other concerns. But I think one of the things is how we define accessory, because as you know, what we have done is to make certain uses, but to make sure that they are considered, or accessory uses to the church. So obviously, the intent is, is for the primary use to be the church and its daily operations, and to allow these other uses to fold underneath that and to work in conjunction with the operation of the church. So that's the intent. I don't know if we need to come up with some different verbiage to either from the floor or to be included in a master design statement, but we're open to that because that's the intent. I think the other concern maybe that they have is the fact that what happens if the church goes away and what is permitted by rights then? I think, to me, if the church goes away, the property has to be rezoned, considering all the uses are accessory to that. However, if, again, if there needs to be, or you all feel like we need to have additional verbiage in the design statement, then we can try to incorporate that. But I think that's, at least in dealing with them, a couple of the concerns they've had. I think if you look again at the application itself in terms of the use and what we're proposing, again, that it's all accessory uses to the existing church that's there. I think if you look at some of the things that we've implemented into the design statement, the PUD, in regards to the 150-foot setback from Cemetery, you know, no buildings that would be built in the west 10 acres would take access from Cemetery Road. And so you look at all of those things, it's very restrictive. And I think you also, if you look at this in regards to what use would make sense here on this track, and you look at that in conjunction with what's going on to the north up at 10th Street, obviously, just north of 10th and Yukon Side is a large commercial complex with Lowe's, with Target, with car dealerships, and those sort of things. So at least what I would think would be somewhat logical to happen on the south side of 10th would be a little bit of a mirror image of that. Obviously, you all will probably get the benefit of seeing those applications and make your decisions on what's appropriate. But I think that's what you're going to see. So I think if you look at that potential developing up there versus the uses on this track, it serves especially as a church with quite a bit of debt from Cemetery Road, as a really good buffer to buffer the single family to the south with what potentially could happen to the north. So I think if you look at the merits of all that with the restrictions that are in there, we feel like that it's a good application. And again, we appreciate the neighbors and Commissioner Powers on her attendance at the meeting, and be happy to answer any questions at chat.
Janice, I had a telephone call. Kendall called me yesterday, and we revisited the point I raised at the last meeting about accessory uses and what accessory uses to a church mean, as I understand the term. And when we were talking about a coffee shop or a bookstore, and lots of churches, my church among them today, have those kinds of functions internal to the church building. And they're, they function when the church building is in use. They're not in external buildings located elsewhere on the site. You know, the bookstore would sell religious material, bibles and so forth. It's not going to be the James Patterson latest thriller kind of thing in a bookstore. And the coffee shop is not going to be something that attracts the general public. I mean, we had a comment last meeting from someone in the audience, well, would this coffee shop, for example, be open to the public? Well, and, well, technically, yes, of course, because churches are open to the public, and of course, churches invite the public. But as an accessory use to the church, you don't put a big Starbucks globe on the outside of the, of the church and invite people in for coffee. It's something that is provided, you know, before and after church services. So I have a question, first of all, about what would this building be that we see on the site? Because an accessory use to the church is not renting offices to people not affiliated with the church. So help me out here.
If I could. I don't know how many of you have ever actually been to this location, but I, so many of my concerns about this application were answered by the actual place itself. It is a sort of enormous interior place. It's very, very nice, by the way, and it's, you know, I guess, some sort of award-winning design and all of that, which is great, too. But, you know, they have this huge atrium interior, and a part of that is their coffee shop, and they have both kind of a lounge area and a table and chair area. Their bookstore, for what it's worth, is sort of a little kiosk in the middle of that. It looks like an information desk. And they have a whole wing for youth activities, and they've got this portion of the atrium area that's glazed off, and it's sort of a recreational place with, I guess, air hockey things and all that kind of stuff. And I was thinking to myself, what do they really, what are they really wanting here? You know, this, they don't need a coffee shop. They don't need a bookstore. What is all this? And I was, I was very concerned about that. And like you, the orientation of the buildings up on Cemetery Road and all that, I had some real concerns about that. But the people who actually governed the church and that were there to talk with the neighbors and answer questions were so amenable and agreeable to do whatever they needed to do to assuage the concerns of the neighbors, it quickly became kind of apparent that they don't really know what they want to do with the property. And normally, that would raise all kinds of red flags for me, because, you know, I would think, well, it's premature, we should just wait, blah, blah, blah. But apparently, there's something about, this property was donated to the church, and now they've purchased some more of it, and they're being donated more of it, and somehow all of that is contingent, to some degree, on them being able to have the same kind of zoning on the rest of the property, the property to the west, as they have on the church proper site now, which is great. The enormous investment that they have in this site and in this location and in their presence there really assuages most of my concerns about whether they're going to continue to be good neighbors, whether they're going to be good stewards of this property. I think they are very, very willing to make sure that everything they do on the site... Oh, there's one other thing. Their administrative offices, despite this enormous facility, are actually not on-site. And I think the one thing that they think probably they will do with the land is bring their administrative offices on-site. So that's one of the things they want to be able to do. But the other thing is, they're very, very willing to tie all of the uses that they want, and there was one use that we talked about perhaps we could eliminate, and that being the food sales thing. But they are very willing to tie the rest of the uses that they're requesting to the church's purposes. And I want to be real clear, that doesn't mean Trinity Baptist Church. I don't think we can legally tie it to this single entity.
Right.
But it's going to be a church. It's going to be a church so far into the future that none of us need to be worried about it, I don't think. Because it's just that substantial. They're willing to limit the use of the practice field, the sports fields to practice fields because they already have another area on-site that they can use for games and that sort of thing. They're willing to push the buildings back up closer to the church proper so that they're not oriented on the Cemetery Road, and don't give anybody now or in the future the idea that they're trying to develop that frontage. They're giving a substantial setback along Cemetery Road. They're willing to orient the buildings onto the main drive. They're limiting access onto Cemetery Road. There really were just like a one or two little bits of language in the master design statement itself. One had to do with these accessory buildings and where they'll be located and that sort of thing. And I think they think that's any building, because it's all accessory. And I think it's easy enough just to say any building and not cloud the issue with whether they're accessory or non-accessory or whatever. There are some things about where things are going to be placed, dumpsters and stuff like that. I think all that will come through the site plan, which we're going to see. I think they're willing to have only their church sign out on Cemetery Road and to write that into the, into the PUD. There's, there's not going to be any other signage. So the concerns that I initially had about the orientation on the Cemetery Road and what are they really going to do here, and, you know, what are we trying to get to, were very much answered. And I think, by and large, as we went through the uses that are remaining, you know, with the neighbors the night we met, it's like, you understand that they could have a childcare there, yes, you know? You understand that they could do adult daycare there, yes. As long as those things are things that are functions of the church and tied to that use, they seemed to be fine with all those things. So I, I was, came away from the meeting very impressed, not only with the facility, but with the church itself and with their, I think, real commitment to be good neighbors. The executive pastor, which I didn't even know there was such a thing, gave, you know, the neighbors his cell phone number and told them if there was any problem now and in the future, good neighbor-wise, to give him a call and that sort of thing. So I know there are people here who were there that night, and if they had any unanswered questions or any remaining doubts or issues, I'd certainly be willing to hear them. But I think that they have done everything that we asked them to and everything that the neighbors had asked them to. And I'm not as concerned about whatever uncertainty may remain about exactly what they're going to do with the individual buildings when they materialize, as I would be otherwise.
We do have three people signed up. I'd like to hear from them, and then Kendall will call you back.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Thank you. My address?
Please.
601 Shamrock Circle.
Thank you.
I'm not really sure how to address the issue, because are you changing the language where you're not going to say the uses have to be accessory to the church?
Yes.
No? Okay. Okay. So, yes, for the most part, we were very comforted by most of what we heard at the meeting. We are down to just the language of that provision in 9.0 that talks about the accessory use. Wanted to make sure that that was proper enough, that it would limit them to accessory uses that were connected to the church. And I, there's no definition language or anything that I could see as far as what a, an accessory use or a primary use is. And I, I tried to look in the municipal code, but I'll be honest with you, I'm not an expert on that. You all know a lot more about that than I do. I couldn't find an accessory use definition. I did find a definition for accessory buildings that just talked about uses that are subordinate, incidental, and customarily found in connection with the principal use of the facility or the existing church, which is what we're talking about. And so...
That language would suit for accessory use, too, wouldn't it, Dan? I mean, it sounds to me like, you know, you could substitute use for building, and you've just defined accessory use.
And that's what I was hoping, is that we could just, if we could agree, or you could decide on some language that would, that would clarify that, then I'm much more comfortable with that. And the only other issue that I know of, that, or question that we have, really, and we should have thought of it the night we met, but, you know, we were all... should have thought of it the night we met, but, you know, we were all rushed and so... But that was the height of the building. It just says the height will be consistent with the required, the zoning requirements. And it doesn't give, is it, I mean, how many feet or stories or...
I can answer that question because I looked it up this morning. That was, that was one thing that we talked about and, and, you know, didn't definitively answer at the meeting. But the height regulations on the property are limited to 20 feet or one story within 35 feet of any residential use, but otherwise, limited 35 feet. So 35 feet is the absolute maximum height.
So probably about...
That's basically a two-story house.
Yes, okay, okay. That, and they've already got restriction on windows pointed towards the residential area, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. So I don't have any other comments to make today, except because you've already clarified the only other issue that I was going to ask you about, and that was subsequent owners. But if you are, if you are confident that whomever might acquire this property at a later date, maybe 10 years from now, cannot use it with this zoning on it...
Unless they were church.
Right, okay. Then, then I'm, I'm confident in that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for your consideration and the time that you've put into this and our concerns about it.
You're welcome. Thank you for your interest.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Earlier, when I was saying how impressed I was with the facility and so on, I, I didn't mean to leave out the neighbors. I've been very impressed also by their tenacity and their willingness both to be reasonable but also to follow through with their concerns on this thing.
Okay. Leonard Mutz?
Mr. Chairman, I'll wave my head.
All right, thank you, sir. James Cross?
I think everything generally has, between our meeting the other night, some other things that we've discussed, I think everything's pretty well been dealt with. The only, I, I don't mean to belabor this issue, but I just, for my own personal clarification, when we're talking about accessory uses, there is a clear difference in my mind between, as you pointed out, if I have, say, an adult daycare or a childcare or something that's an accessory use to the church versus an accessory use to the church that also allows the general public to come in secondarily to take advantage of that facility. And so that was, I understand accessory use being related to church activities, but can that also mean the inclusion of, the rental of office space is another good one. If we have an office building and the church occupies, say, half of it, the other half, can they rent that out to the general public? Or does that accessory use limit them to that? Only things related to the church activities can go...
Well, if I can answer your question, I would say renting the other half of the building out to someone or an entity unrelated to the church would be a non-accessory use.
Okay.
On the other hand, if they're renting a daycare center, I know lots of churches that have daycare centers that are open not only to their membership but to the public. And that is basically a public service and many churches provide it. So that sort of thing...
Well, and their retail shops are open to the public.
I'm sorry?
Their retail shops are open for public. I mean, you can drop in any of the major churches and go in and buy a book.
Yeah, if you want to buy a bible or something, you can do that.
I may not be going to church, but I might want a book. And I think that this...
Well, my...
The traffic generated from that type use and that type facility is, in my experience, de minimis. I mean, it'll be invisible in a site this big.
Yeah. And it would be off Cemetery Road because access to both the church and any accessory building they construct is going to be off Cemetery Road. So even if you had moms and dads queuing up for daycare in the morning, it's not going to be on Cemetery Road. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you for your time and your patience with this.
Thank you. Kendall, I'd like to put in to the PUD the accessory use language that was read by Ms. Heaton, just substituting use for, for building, and I think that captures satisfactory definition of accessory use. Any other discussion commissioners? Janice?
Well, if, if you don't mind, I would make a motion to approve this, but I would like to just make a couple of quick, specific notes, make sure that they get into the record. In Section 8.1, there is language about the C1 neighboring Commercial District and it, it talks about including conditional, special permit, special exception, et cetera. And JJ and I had talked about this, and I think that language needs to come out of there. We're going to remove, aren't we, Kendall, food and beverage retail sales from the list of acceptable uses?
Yes.
In Section 9.1, we're going to remove the word accessory from in front of the word building so that it just says "any building within the west 10 acres shall be oriented to face the Center Drive." The same correction I would like to see made on Section 9.8, talking about, remove the word accessory from in front of the building so that it just says "any building within the west 10 acres shall take access from, access from the existing Central Drive," also. And then I, I would like, just as a point of strength, I guess, just to make very clear that there will be the single sign for the church only out on Cemetery Road, and that is it. No other signage of any kind on Cemetery Road. Realize that internally, there may be little building identifiers, but, but otherwise, no other, no other signage out on Cemetery Road. And with those minor amendments, I would move approval.
I, I do have one more question, either JJ or Dan. Do we need Section 9.0 listing those uses since we're describing accessory uses to a church? Okay.
Because there could be other, these are the ones they're asking for and this is what it's limited to.
Okay.
There could be other that they're not asking for, so...
Okay. All right. That was a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Approve Item 16 as condition. Cast your votes. And you're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Item 17 is S.PUD 729, application by Wood Asset Management, LLC to rezone 1415 Northeast 63rd Street from PUD 639 and the Urban Conservation District to SPUD 729 and Ward 7.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Callcord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Ms. Wood is also here, who is the owner of Cole's Garden. What you see before you is a S.PUD for approximately 1.619 acres. Ms. Wood bought Cole's Garden several years ago. She also happens to own a wholesale insurance company that happens to underwrite the insurance for Cole's Garden. What she decided several years ago was she wanted to consolidate her enterprises onto one piece of property that she owns rather than going back and forth. When she looked at the PUD and came to our office, our first step was to analyze whether or not we could fit in what she's wanting to do in office use under the current PUD. The current PUD for Cole's Gardens allows retail uses, restaurant uses and office uses if they are accessory to the main use. Because she underwrote Cole's Gardens, we at least thought we had a, a good argument that it was somewhat accessory. We went to staff and they did not agree and they advised us to file the S.PUD, which we did. And in that S.PUD, what we've done is committed to things that are more restrictive than the current PUD that encumbers Cole's Gardens right now. We have limited it to a single use, that being administrative and professional offices. And with that, like I said, her use is a independent wholesale insurance company. And so what that means is, it's not going to have the public coming and going. It's going to be her and her employees, which is somewhere between 20 and 30, I believe. So it's not going to create a, a traffic issue, it's not going to generate a lot of more people coming to the site than would otherwise be there. Recognizing the issues that we had with Cole's Garden, we knew that the access in the neighborhoods was a problem. Staff has a TE recommending to eliminate access to Lottie. We are in agreement with that. There is an access right now, it's a big wrought iron gate with a lock on it. Ms. Wood's goal and what she desires to do is to leave it exactly like that. But 100% of her traffic to this new building will come through the entrance on 63rd Street where the Cole's Garden traffic's come through. So with that, we felt like we're not creating a traffic impact to the neighborhood. Nobody coming to her office would go through the neighborhood because it's not the public, it is her employees. They're going to know where, where that building is. We limit our height to more than what a Cole's Garden PUD allows. And if anybody has been out there, they know that the buildings that were built are very nice looking. They're real nice rock and stone. And what we've agreed to is this building will match the architecture 100% with what's out there. It'll be the rock and stone, and if you had never been there and you went out after this building was built, you wouldn't know that it wasn't there when it started. The other thing we decided to do was to look at what the original PUD would allow as far as buildable area. And what we found is, the PUD in place right now would allow 70% of the entire site to be covered with a building. That's approximately 200,000 square feet of building. What we're asking for is one building, less in height than what is currently allowed, one use, and in our opinion, that is less intrusive into the neighborhood. If Ms. Wood so desired to build 200,000 square feet, she could do that. And what the PUD would allow is more entertainment. So if she wanted to have four weddings, five weddings, conferences, as many things at a time, she could. We think that would be more intrusive. It also allows aquariums. You could build a 200,000 square foot aquarium, be like the Jinx Aquarium. That would create and invite the public. That would create an impact on the neighborhood. One advantage that the location that Ms. Wood has picked for this site is it actually sits down in a little depression. So although the building's going to be a one-story building, because it sits down around, I think it's around eight feet, it'll be less impactful if you were driving through the neighborhood. In addition, the original PUD asks for trees to be maintained and kept. There are trees along Lottie that Ms. Wood plans to keep. She wants to use that as a buffer, as it has been for her entire time of owner show. When we set out to file this case, before we filed it, we recommended that we go meet with the neighbors, which we did. We met with the neighbors sometime in May, and at that meeting, we, we showed them our proposal and we explained to them what her business is and why she wants it. They asked us to hold off on filing the application until they had the time to meet as a neighborhood, understand the application, and we were fine with that. We provided them a copy of the S.PUD and we provided them with all the renderings that you, you see before you now. And after several months of not getting back with us, they finally got back and said, we voted and we're going to protest. So at that time, we moved forward. And that's where we are today. And where we are is with an application that is what this planning commission has, has desired for several years from applicants. Tell us what you're going to do, show us what you want to do, and limit it down. We think we've done that. We have a, a SPUD that only allows the one use, and as I said, her use is very restrictive. We show you the exact rendering of what the building will look like. We even show you an interior floor plan of what she plans to do. There was some concern because we show a exercise room, that exercise room is for her employees, and on the site plan, you'll show that it doubles as a safe room. One of the comments that some of the neighbors made were, there's a gym down the street, so I want to be clear that, that this isn't a gym open to the public, this is a, a gym that would be utilized by Ms. Wood and her employees only. So we think that we have come forward with an application that has zero impact to the neighborhood. The, any impact is, is minimized by agreeing to cut off access to Lottie. Nobody will drive through the neighborhood. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Ms. Wood is, is here to answer any questions as well.
Any questions to Mr. Box? We do have some people signed up.
I have, I have one quick question. David, is this the original design for this building? Was it, was it as low as it is now or, or was it a taller building, the original design?
I, I think there was a rendering way back when that showed a taller building.
Yeah.
So this building is shorter than what was originally seen and may have been in a previous staff report even.
Right.
That may have showed a, a second story. This is a single-story building.
Okay. And the height of it from the grade is about what?
26 feet.
26 feet, okay, thank you.
David, do you know where was Cole's Garden originally zoned as that?
Um, I could...
Any recollection of that?
We say when?
When, yeah.
1998, as I recall.
98.
Oh, when? I thought you said what was it zoned, when? 98.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
We have four people signed up and I will call you in the order I've been giving your names, and I would ask if you have something to add to what's been said. We'd like to hear from you. We don't want to hear necessarily the same comment four or five times. Kenneth Kelly.
My name is Kenneth Kelly. I live at 6613 North Prospect. I was introduced to this project at the meeting in May at Cole's Garden when Ms. Woods and her team presented us with the conceptual drawings and stuff. The building, as she's drawn it, is, as they say, going to be very much like the building that they have now, except that it will be a larger building. They have 15,000 feet now, they're planning on an 18,000 square foot building. It is not in my front yard, it's not out my side window, but it is in my neighbor's front window. Yeah, there's trees there, but there's also a parking lot, there's going to be a building, there's going to be a roof, and these things are all going to be able to be seen from these people's front yard and through their front window. If we break up this PUD, what's to stop her from going ahead and putting in another office building? What's to stop her from, from not doing what the original PUD was designed for as well as the Northeast Corridor Conservation Charter that was drawn up and which it states that this area around Remington and the zoo and Cowboy Hall of Fame is for education? If she wants to build a 200,000 square foot aquarium, that's great. Let's educate our kids, let's let them see these things. But we don't need an office building that juts several hundred feet into our neighborhood and is built into the front yard of my neighbors. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Roger Allen.
Hello.
Give us your name and address, please.
Roger Allen, 1801 Northeast 69th.
Thank you.
Being a board member, member of the Persimmon Hill Neighborhood Association, we're, seems like every year or two years, we're trying to defend the existing PUD 639, and that's why we're here today, that we don't want presidents to be, take place by splitting it up as into the SPUD, proposed SPUD 729. Our neighborhood has a lot of elderly people, a lot of retirees, we're having a new influx of young neighbors moving into the neighborhood, and we just want to be here to represent those that are living on Lottie and the adjacent street on the other side of Cole's Garden that are not able to come and represent themselves and protest. Going, just to reiterate the, us being the northeast gateway, it was, we became the northeast gateway conservation district to be able to protect the National Cowboy and Heritage Museum from intrusive or large commercial buildings. We're really a, a great little neighborhood. There's, it's supposed to be museum row and not a large commercial institution. There's, we, there's so much more resting on it, it seems like, that our neighborhood would change so much with an industry coming in. 35 employees coming in to work back and forth every day does create more traffic there on 63rd, it is on a hill. So there would be concerns of traffic just right there because we use 63rd as well. Trying, I'm really trying not to reiterate what he's saying, so I'm...
Thank you.
Kind of confused on that, so, or not confused, I just don't want to do that. But I was really wanting to, wanting to talk about the single lane... But I was really wanting to talk about the single lane use of Lottie, which he's totally... He said that there would not be an opening to Lottie, which the rendering showed us at first and still does on that one down there. And these are just renderings, and we know how that can always be changed in the future.
Well, it's not going to be changed. The PUD says there will be no access on Lottie. So there's going to be a gate there, and it's not going to be opened.
Does that sway your concerns at all?
No, it really doesn't because of the PUD 639. It's written in simple language that everybody can understand. It was formed in conjunction with the planning commission and residents of the community to protect that piece of land. Once it's broken up, it's going to be... It's open to be broke up to more. So our residents are very concerned on keeping the integrity of that property. It seems, you know, there's already trees that are gone that the PUD says that should be replaced, that haven't been replaced. Not even from Mrs. Wood's occupancy, but before that, you know, they've died and haven't been replaced. Just the conservation aspect of it with the wildlife. We have fox that run through her... Through all of our yards. It's just important to maintain the integrity of that property for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Mike Skinner.
Good afternoon, sir. Mike Skinner, 6532 North Lottie, Oklahoma City. Just moved in in February to the property just north of Cole's Garden. We share that property line. Born and raised, I drove a homemade go-kart on Lottie, earned a drive on Lottie. Now, after my parents have passed away, I get to live on Lottie. I can't speak any better to the precedent concern of a neighborhood association, approximately 15 to 20 folks here today. I appreciated what I heard from Mr. Box, who's always a passionate advocate for his client on locking that gate on Lottie. As someone who lives on Lottie, I still will submit from personal experience that putting 20 to 30 cars coming out of that Northeast 63rd entrance to Cole's Gardens, many of which will go west, are going to put them right in a blind spot where I sit on Lottie, trying to get out on 63rd. It's... I know from experience, the four or five families that live there, you have to look over to the Cowboy Hall of Fame to the east. You have to look almost to Kelly on the west to see what cars are coming. Do that one potato, two potato, see them go past and come out. Putting 20 to 30 cars twice a day into that, I would submit is still dangerous, but at the very least, the PUD I was sent as a resident within 300 feet or whatever has paragraph nine access. There shall be one point of access to North Lottie. Nothing about that locked up. Would ask that the words be changed. I could tell from Mr. Box's comments that from the applicant's view, the process has been less than desirable. As someone who lives there, I would say ditto to that from my experience. To my knowledge, the Neighborhood Association was never asked, visited by the applicant. We came to their turf. This has been a process that has been dynamic in its design. But mainly, sir, the precedent, I won't go into that anymore. The dangerous intersection, the process, the good faith. My dad is a retiree, helped clear land for Cole's Garden. It is a gym. One tree that could fall down on DR4 that I'm told was brought to the applicant's attention possibly over a year ago, is still there. Those types of things don't give me, as a neighbor, a warm feeling. Do appreciate your time. Appreciate all that you're doing for Oklahoma City. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roberta Smith.
I'm Roberta Smith, and my home's 1301 Northeast 63rd. It's that little R4 right there. It's the northwest corner, right on the corner of the garden. I've been here before, and this property has been in my family since 1895. So it's like I have a long, long attachment to this, and so does my family. When the PUD was originally made, so much was put into that, and there's most of us that are here today, including you with the commission, we were all here in 1998, a majority of us. And this was a really, really big thing, to put the garden in the heart of the neighborhood. With Allen and Susan Coles, they were all around the neighborhood. A lot was put into this by the people who live there, the people right close to it, the whole entire neighborhood. Our neighborhood is unique because not only are we neighbors, we're really friends. It's a very static neighborhood. We know each other. We've been there for a long time. Our association is coming to the end of its 17th year. We try to be very open to things. We try to be very understanding. And with this, this is a really huge thing, the breaking of the PUD. It is a huge thing. We haven't exactly gone by the way that we go by things in our neighborhood. We did meet. We did meet with Jenny Wood and David Box. We were summoned by David Box on his letterhead, but not the whole neighborhood, just the 300 feet people. The truth of the matter is, we've never had anyone at our meeting at the museum. If they had come to the meeting at the museum, we would have had an entirely different time since the spring. And if you look at the materials that you have, you will see on our petitions that they're dated May 28. You'll see on our protest letter that it's dated June 3. We thought things were going to progress along through the summer. We thought they were going to go in a little different orderly manner, and that's the way we do things, with a lot of discussion, a lot of thought. I have to say, with our neighborhood, we really do try to weigh things out, whether it's good for Oklahoma City. We've been a good neighbor to Oklahoma City. We've tried to protect the museum. We've had great grants be written with a great deal of time. Through our grants, we provide the landscaping along 63rd. The museum takes care of that. We've put up exceptional markers. Last year, we did lighting, because we know that our neighborhood is all that a lot of tourists see when they come to Oklahoma City. We're proud of the Adventure District. We do have a new wellness center. There's many things going along. The MAPS 3 is putting the sidewalks on the north side... Excuse me, the south side of 63rd Street. And we're excited about those things. We believe that constructive change is good. Positive change is good. And we'd like to be sure we don't want to stand in the way of anybody's dream. I'm going to hand something out to you just a minute that is the press release for when Cole's Garden came to our neighborhood. And this is the one thing that bothers us just a little bit, and it's bothered us over the summertime. And that, if you look at this, it really was the intent of Jenny Wood from the time she saw this property, she purchased this property, to make it into her business, an insurance office. It's a lot different to have an office park than to have a garden. It's a lot different to live next to an office park than a garden. The concerns of the neighborhood is, and it is a really huge thing for us to be here today, because with the current PUD, we have a say about our neighborhood. And once we start breaking it up into these spuds, the say goes. The say goes. And by the same token, if the insurance company goes, then it's something different. Things happen in life. We can't make guarantees. Nobody wants to stand in the way of somebody's dreams or in their business. But at the same time, Jenny Wood is one person, and you have an entire neighborhood of people. And you have petitions in your possession that have been individually signed by people. And it's like, yes, a lot of time has gone into this. Those have been hand gathered. They have been where they could see the pictures. We did have a picnic in June. There were 100 people there. And we did go around, and we did talk individually. In June, it was really 100% in wanting to keep the PUD together. We had a large meeting of about 75 for our neighborhood night out. And it's like we do have a communication breakdown after the 25th of June. We didn't know what was going to happen. We really had thought all summer long that at some point, we would be here before you. And that didn't happen. But we are here today, and I think the thing that we really would like the commission to consider is what this means if we take away the PUD, if we take away all the rules that are there, the protections that the neighborhood has, and we change this from a garden and an event center, if we change that into an office park. We do have exception in the neighborhood that from the very beginning, Jenny Wood ignored our PUD. And the PUD is very clear that this was not to be an office park. And when she purchased it, that was the rule. And we carefully, carefully, with all of the neighbors, constructed a PUD to protect the neighborhood. And this is in the heart of the neighborhood. It is right in front of the Cowboy Western Heritage Center. This is a very important thing. And when this decision is made, it's going to change the whole neighborhood. It's going to change the street. It's going to change everything as we know it. And speaking for the neighborhood, we feel this should be given very, very, very careful attention as to what this will mean and the impact that it will have and what will happen ongoing. We do have questions that weren't answered in this. There is to be a large sign that says "One General Source." We don't know where that's going to be. We'd like to know where that's going to be. There already, just with the PUD, we haven't had the most congenial relationship with Jenny Wood. It's like even with just a garden, we have constant complaints of the people that live along Lottie, that live along Prospect. We've had little wars for our neighborhood, that it's not like our neighborhood. We try to settle everything in a peaceful way. We try to make compromises. And with just a limited kind of access, with a lot of just limited events, we've had tremendous problems. And so our concern is, break the PUD, break it off into spuds, and really have an office building, and then we feel we won't really have any recourse. And what Mr. Skinner was referring to, right there on PUD 715, where it says vacant, Georgia Jones lives in that house that you're seeing. There is a huge tree right there at the south end of her house. And it is a really big tree. And it is dead. And if there is a storm that comes, that house is probably... Is going to be right in the direct path of that tree. And Georgia's concern is, if the tree falls and damages her home, that when the insurance people come, they're liable to say, "Well, this was an act of nature, and her house is ruined." We've tried through all the city things, and everybody just brings it back that we have to ask Jenny Wood to do something about the tree. And that has not happened. And that was brought to her attention this summer.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
I'm confused.
Uh-huh.
You said PUD 715, there's a big tree on that corner?
Well, I'm just looking up here. I didn't know it was Coles 715, but it belongs to Cole's Garden. Right there is the corner of Lottie, where the vacant lot.
Oh, I see. Okay. So they own that piece of property, is what you're saying?
It's right there. That's an overflow parking lot for the garden.
All right.
The dead tree at the house that you see, right up against that, that's where the dead tree is. So, I mean, it's just like there actually are two exits off from the garden on Lottie. It's like the property at the back, that has been leased out over the summer. There have been times over the summer, Mr. Skinner, Eddie Vandiver, Frank Henderson, have not been able to get out of their own driveway because of being blocked by vehicles that are coming out of that maintenance area of it is sublet at Cole's Garden. That was finally addressed, but it's like between drywall, sheet metal. These older people along that street have spent most of their summer trying to pick these things up. There's already true, it's a dead-end street. But just with the way the garden is now, we've had speeding problems along Prospect. There has been already, just with the way the garden is now, tremendous problems with litter, noise, all different kinds of things that has caused the neighborhood to be very tolerant. So our concerns are, if that has happened in a limited way, then if you bring in an office building, and this office building has gone up and down, and whether it's the four feet that we've been told it would be put into the ground. I mean, over the summer, we were told it was going to be 29 feet. Four feet sunk in the ground, and that makes it... Would have made, you know, it's close to a two-feet building. Keeps... There's changes all the time. And that has caused a lot of distress amongst the neighbors.
So in conclusion, basically, you're concerned about them being a good neighbor? As one of your major concerns?
That is one of the major concerns, because we probably, out of this discussion this summer, I think it's the first time that maybe we have been neighbors. And we've all been really, really, really trying. We no longer refer to it as Cole's Garden, because we're really talking about and we really deal with Jenny Wood and her operations manager, Becky Heibel, now. And we hope that now we are not the Neighborhood Association or the neighborhood, that we all have people. And Jenny has met a number of people because of the cell tower. We have not been able to get our usual good group. They don't want to go to the garden. They still... That was just last year, you know? So we haven't had a meeting at the museum. We haven't had the kind of discussion that we generally have.
But let me summarize so that we can get to the voting.
Right.
Your two concerns are, one, the PUD, and basically beginning to divide up the original PUD.
That is our biggest concern.
And your second concern is good neighbor.
That is true.
Okay. That's what we need to know. Thank you.
That is true. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
David?
Just a few, real briefly. The parking that was shown, as you can see on the aerial, is existing parking. We will not be adding any parking. We'll utilize the parking that's there. On the issue of Lottie and the control that the neighbors have, the current PUD allows two access points on Lottie. We are willing... We're agreeing to the TE. We will have zero access points on Lottie. Over the last several years, as everybody knows, we have had a drought and disease in several species of trees. Around 100 trees have died. Jenny, as of right now, has replaced at least 130 trees. She is systematically replacing the trees. She can't control the weather. She can't control diseases that can happen. All she can do is replace them when it happens. The traffic issue coming out of Lottie, as you can see, 63rd Street is a four-lane street. This would be less of a traffic problem than if we added another event space where there was 300 people going to a wedding coming down 63rd Street. That would be more of an impact to the neighborhood. On the question of what happens if Jenny goes away, and now we have this building that allows office use, I would submit to this commission the things that we're willing to do and take access off of Lottie. to do and take access off of Lottie, you're not going to have an independent user using that building. This will now only lend itself, I would submit, to one user owning the whole thing and having an accessory office use. Because if you don't have access on Lottie, Ms. Wood's willing to cut her sign down to four feet. It's just a placard in front of her building to identify her building. You're not going to have an independent person that's going to go run an office there. It's going to lend itself to one user for the entire site. So we think we have minimized any impact. We tried to be as upfront and honest as we could. We met with the neighbors prior to even filing the application. We then held off on filing the application until the neighborhood could vote. So I would submit that we've done more than we are accustomed to doing on all the other applications that we have protested. We tried to do everything we could to satisfy their concerns. We weren't able to do it. But I think if you look at the merits of the case, there is no real impact to the neighborhood. This is more restrictive and could be less impactful than what Ms. Wood could do right now under the current PUD. With that, we would ask for your approval, just as the staff has recommended.
Staff recommendation. Commissioners?
Before we, before we, I'm sorry.
Pardon me. I just really want to reiterate that we're a conservation district. Conservation district. And the PUD was created to protect that piece of property. Just reiteration, conservation district.
Okay, Janice?
I was going to ask, this precedes me in time. I was not here for the adoption of the original Cole's Garden. And I was going to ask those few of you, if there are still, well, I know you were here. I don't know whether John was here at the time.
James was.
James. You know, about the, the effort that went into the original PUD, I think I've heard it was substantial.
It was a tremendous effort. We were very, very conscious of the area. The Coles were amenable, but they wanted to do certain things. We frankly, curtailed a number of those. Down to, there's some real strange restrictions in that PUD. But I believe Mr. Box is also correct in saying the PUD does allow for basically the use of the entire gardens, and they could expand it significantly above what it is now.
I hear that. And I think, you know, there's sort of, I guess, the point on which I'm teetering here a little bit is, you know, it's one thing to say you're going to have a facility like this and you're going to allow certain uses in order that it can be commercially viable. But the idea is that it is, it's this garden and that's what it is. And that seems very consistent to me with this area and with the museums and that sort of thing. And the idea that you're going to sort of depart from that, although I will acknowledge, I think that, you know, the use that they are proposing is, they've shrunk it down as far as they can, you know? They've shrunk down the signage, they've shrunk down the impact, they've, you know, they've limited their access to Lottie. I mean, I think they've done everything they can to make it as palatable as possible. And I think in some ways, you know, the impact would be, I don't want to say minor, I don't want to say negligible. I think they have narrowed the impact down as much as they can, I'll put it that way. But on the other hand, you know, what I'm hearing is that there's a long history here, that these neighbors have been very involved, that the uses that are allowed. I'm not terribly persuaded by the argument that it could be worse, you know?
But there is a long history. And it is a very restrictive PUD. I believe this SPUD is, well, I know it is, even though the other one has some real specific, finite restrictions, this SPUD is more restrictive than the overall PUD. I was troubled by this application initially when it had access to Lottie. With the access to Lottie going away, I think that mitigates a lot of it. It was brought up, 20 to 30 cars, that's going to create more traffic going out on 63rd. This is an event center. We put cars in there in high numbers. 63rd Street is a high volume street. I'm not really concerned about that. I'm also somewhat impressed with the fact that the architecture is matched up. This isn't a box office building sticking up like a sore thumb. And yet, I agree with you, this may or may not have been a contemplated use in the original PUD, depending on your definition of accessory that we got into on a previous application. But, you know, that's why we have the SPUD before us, we're not arguing that definition. I find it somewhat ironic that I had a friend and client for many years who is now deceased, who right down the street from this ran a oil well drilling company in this neighborhood. So a low volume, single use office building, I don't think is going to necessarily hurt the...
And to me, it's really not about that. I mean, I get, as I said, that they've kind of narrowed down the impact as much as they possibly can. It really just hinges on the question of, you know, this change in what is allowed. I mean, would we be talking about it if somebody wanted to build a small office building on the Cowboy Hall of Fame, which I can't call it anything but that, property, you know?
Well, there are packed office buildings on the south side of 63rd. Small office buildings, as well as one large one.
Well, you know, this is a traditional neighborhood. And I've looked at it, and I've been here on the seat when we talked about Cole's Garden, which was a tremendous negotiation piece with the cell tower, which we were totally against that because of a lot of obvious impacts. And I've always appreciated this community because they really come out and voice their concerns to keep the community and keep their neighborhood in a manner where, you know, where it don't get away from it and protects it. It's an old neighborhood, when you go through it, out of all due respect, a lot of it's deteriorating, people are dying out, moving out. But there's still a group that's there that's maintaining and keeping, keeping it the best they can. I travel 63rd all the time, and I've seen Cowboy Hall of Fame, Cowboy Hall of Fame expand. Also see that hotel that's right to the southwest corner of Cole's Garden. They have in and out traffic. The restaurant is open now. Gabriel's has opened. And it has a lot of cars, a lot more than County Line at the time. And I've seen the, on 63rd and Keller where the Sonic was, another restaurant has moved in there. And then they're getting ready to expand to the east. So I've seen a lot of activity there. And as I travel, I never get a real impact. I understand the impact they're saying is that the actual moving of breaking the spud. But it also states that compatible commercial use is, compatible other uses is good for the area for the growth. And with the restrictions of this, I see this as more of a compatible use because in 98, it was a certain, things was happening in 98 a certain way. What's the difference is happening now? But I don't think it goes too far away from the intent. I visited Dennis and the architects, and when they had the two story building, I was concerned about that because of the visual impact. I was concerned about the access over to Lottie when I saw that parking lot. Well, then I discovered the parking lot is there, that's an existing parking lot. The gated drive is an existing drive there that they committed to leave it locked and not take any access with the single use. So then I started just looking at it overall, comprehensive, as the best I could. And I just, I really can't get that much of an offensive, negative impact on it. I think it has some possibilities. I don't know, I think, does the community ever meet, do they have the association meeting at the Cole's Garden?
Cowboy Hall of Fame.
Yeah, the Cowboy Hall of Fame, okay.
We've never been able to...
We didn't need to know that. I've heard expressions that they would be allowed to or if they wanted to. So I can't speak to a lot of the good neighbor thing because I don't live in the neighborhood, but I pass through that. So I really have come to the conclusion from listening to everything, that I don't think it will have that negative of an impact. I was worried about the noise and scenery along Lottie. They have the trees, those are kept in place, and it's got the red cedars, you know, where they're real thick. And as much as I'm sensitive to both situations, I feel like it's not that great of a negative impact. And I would move that we approve the application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the application. Cast your votes. And it is approved.
Thank you.
Support or reject?
Are we on 24?
Huh? We're on 18.
Let's give them...
We got nobody there.
All right, we're on item 18, which is C 6528. That is the final plat of Comms Springs, Section 1, in Ward 1.
Good afternoon. I'm Kendall Dillon, representing the applicant. And this obviously is a final plat. We have four TEs which we're in agreement with, so we'd ask for your approval.
One signed up, commissioners? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 18. Cast your votes. And that is approved.
Thank you.
Item 19 is PUD 1510, an application by Tower Lakes LLC to resign 1100 East Britton from PUD 1369 to PUD 1510.
Good afternoon again. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicants. This was originally approved as part of 1369. It had always anticipated multi-leveled, larger office buildings on the north half with residential on the south half. We're coming back with this PUD to allow for just office use and taking off the restriction of, we had a height limit on the, of 35 feet, I think, because of our adjoining residential that we had in the original PUD. So with that, we're happy with all the TEs that the staff has included and would agree with them. I ask for your approval.
We don't usually hear happy with all your TEs.
Yeah, I'm thrilled. They were helpful.
Well, with that, I move approval then.
Yeah. We're happy to approve it. Cast your votes. There we are.
Thank you.
Item 19 is approved.
Items 20 and 21 have been continued. Item 22 is C 6534, final plat of Thornhill, Section 5, in Ward 8.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Massey with Red Plains, representing the owner on this application for final plat of Thornhill, Section 5. We have reviewed the TEs and are in agreement with all, with one exception. Item 4, we would like a clarification that the pedestrian access to the Edmund Middle School to the north will be through the public street sidewalk on Pennsylvania Avenue. There will be no interior access through the subdivision. We've had that correspondence with the Edmund Public School District, and they request no additional access.
I'm sorry, again, access would be what, along Pennsylvania?
Along Pennsylvania, yes. The public sidewalk. That is correct.
No one has signed up, commissioners? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 22, deleting TE 4. Is that what you want us to do?
Yes, yeah.
Cast your votes. And that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 23 is C 6537, is a final plat of Brookstone Lakes, West Phase 3, in Ward 3.
Again, for the record, Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. And another final plat, we have six TEs which we're in agreement with and would ask for your approval.
Again, commissioners, no one has signed up. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 23. Cast your votes. And that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 24 has been continued. Item 25 is ordinance for public hearing, amending the zoning and planning code, and this relates to PUD and SPUD. We have heard this before, this is to...
So this is to adopt because we've said it for hearing, correct?
Correct.
So we need a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick comment. I think this is a good step in the right direction. However, it does not address sunset issues or density calculations that we've talked about for a year and a half, and no one currently wants to step up and address that. Therefore, I'm going to vote against this, against approval, since it does not have those two items in it.
Motion and second to approve this. Cast your votes. And it's adopted.
Item 26, ordinance for public hearing, amending the zoning and planning code, and this relates to urban agriculture. And Ken Bryan from my staff is here to present on this.
Terry, did we get larger overheads for the items eight and nine?
I brought a copy of the aerials, not right, but, and then so they can pull up the zoning website.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm Ken Bryan. I'm a planner with the Oklahoma City Planning Department. And I'm here to talk a little bit about the urban agriculture code amendments that we're proposing here in Oklahoma City. As I get started, I'd like to recognize the departments that have supported our research and the amendments to the code. And includes, I think, every division from the Development Services Department, the Municipal Counselors Office, and the Office of Sustainability. We also had help identifying issues here in Oklahoma City from a group of local food enthusiasts and urban farmers. So I'd like to thank them as well. So the reason urban agriculture is an issue of note recently across the country, not just here in Oklahoma City, pertains to the local food movement. And that describes a scenario where more and more people are interested and care about whether food is grown and how it's handled and how it's produced. They're interested in it to the extent at this point that it affects their buying behavior. And you can see that manifest in the marketplace with the prevalence of farmers markets, food cooperatives, and other retail that focuses on local food. There's an increasing awareness of the health challenges and impacts associated with poor access to fresh and healthy produce. And if you could click, yeah, gardening is more popular these days, and that's another response to an interest in local food. And that includes not just home gardens, but community gardens. Neighborhoods, businesses, schools, churches, and nonprofits are getting involved in community gardening. And then finally, sort of the, kind of the most intense example of local food movement involves urban farming. And that is, that just describes a scenario where a hobbyist or an enthusiast has been passionate enough about their process to make a livelihood of farming in the city. popular these days, and that's a, that's another response to an interest in local food. And that includes not, not just home gardens, but community gardens. Neighborhoods, businesses, schools, churches, and nonprofits are, are getting involved in community gardening. And then finally, sort of the, kind of the most intense example of, of local food movement involves urban farming, and that is, that, that just describes a scenario where a hobbyist or an enthusiast has been passionate enough about their process to make a livelihood of, of farming in the city. So, I'd like to take a look at some of the challenges and concerns here, specific to Oklahoma City, when it comes to gardening and urban agriculture. Firstly, the municipal code. It's fairly clear on agricultural activities and animal husbandry on, that's conducted on lots of an acre or more. It's pretty clear on agricultural activities in AA or agricultural zoning. However, it's not as clear on gardening and farming and animal raising on urban-sized lots, and it's silent on activities often associated with gardening, such as composting, operation of greenhouses, and rainwater harvesting. So, those concerns with the code lend themselves to some code enforcement challenges as well, and that, specifically, those include, when can a garden become high grass and weeds? Is compost, what's the difference between compost and trash? Can compost become trash? Rainwater harvesting, the storing of rainwater can create a standing water situation, and then finally, are chickens considered livestock, or pets, or both? Here in Oklahoma City, we have some access challenges when it comes to fresh, healthy produce. There's a few farmers' markets available throughout the metro. They typically have limited hours, and seem to be very subject to the extreme change in season that we experience in Oklahoma. There's few community-supported agriculture entities as well, and those are two sources that would, could increase the availability of fresh, healthy produce produced locally. There's some other challenges that were called to our attention concerning onsite sales, and that would be a situation where a community garden wants to maybe put up a farm stand or something on the weekend and, and sell from their, sell from their garden. That, that issue is fairly extensive and fairly nuanced, and we, we are not, these amendments that we're talking about today don't, don't address that particular issue. So, we try to respond to citizen requests about these topics and others, and especially if we can do so in a, in a way that reduces uncertainty, provides clarity, and we can do that in a relatively clear and concise way, and provide simple and reasonable provisions to mitigate any impacts, whether those are perceived or actual. Next line? Thank you. So, fortunately, Oklahoma City's not the first community to address urban agriculture in the United States, so we were able to do extensive research for peer and best-practice cities. And let me just mention what, what we mean when we say best-practice city, is a community or city that's recognized for its, its approach. It may be recognized in the, in the industry or in literature for its approach on a particular topic. Usually, they're, they've been at it a bit, so they're, they've had some time to learn lessons and make revisions, and, and their process or program is fairly mature. For peer cities, we look at, we tend to look at cities that have a similar population and setting or context, or have a similar condition, such as being a state capital or housing a single major sports franchise. So, when it comes to urban agriculture and gardening, you'll often see definitions and provisions for different scales of gardening. We've tried to reflect that as well. You'll often see provisions for composting, rainwater harvesting, and the, and ancillary activities related to gardening, such as greenhouses, hoop houses, hydroponics, or aquaponics. And I just wanted to share quickly a list of cities that we looked at, just for, mostly for your informational purposes. Lots of cities have a community garden program that may involve soil testing at no cost or very little cost. They may have a land leasing program, and they may do capacity building or training related to operating community garden, and those are things that we could look at here So, looking at the research that we did as far as backyard or urban chickens, we found that provisions concerning chickens typically have restrictions on the number of birds that are allowed, and those are either given as a, a maximum, so an up to a certain number per parcel, or a given number of chickens per square feet of lot coverage, so for example, one, one chicken per thousand square feet. They often have requirements that chickens have access to a coop of a particular size, usually also on a per-chicken basis. Roosters are almost always prohibited. They've often provisions to allow the chickens access to an outdoor unpaved area, and outdoor slaughter is often restricted, and typically include nuisance language regarding odors, pests, and noise. So, let's look now at some of the details in the proposed code amendment that we've got in front of us today. Summary of the changes includes a few new definitions, a few new use units or use classifications, and conditions associated with those new uses. So, on new definitions, we've got a definition for an agricultural product. We wrote that as, as broadly as we could, so that it would cover plants, crops, animal commodities that are grown or raised for, for food. We've got a definition for aquaponics and hydroponics. That just describes a scenario where plants or aquatic animals are raised in a circulating, nutrient-rich water as the growing medium instead of soil. It's often done inside, such as inside a greenhouse. We've got a definition for compost. We have a definition for a compost holding unit, and that's just a, a device that's purpose-built to hold or manage compost, and we'll see that those are required in, in some districts. So, taking a look at new use units, as I said, the code already has some provisions about agricultural activities and animal husbandry, so we inserted a new animal-raising unit that, that's specific to chickens. We added a unit for composting. We added three new use units for different scales of, of gardening. I'll just quickly go over the, the differences between those. They are, they are very similar. A home garden would just be, it's exactly what it sounds like it is, conducted on a lot or a parcel that contains a dwelling unit. Community garden differs in that it's operated by a group of individuals on a piece of land that may or may not contain a primary structure. Urban farm is very similar to those two items, with the exception that it's operated primarily for commercial purposes. And then a roof garden is, can be any of those types, just done on the roof of a building. We added use units for greenhouse and hoop house. Those are both structures designed to extend the growing season. They differ in, in, the greenhouse is equipped with the ability to regulate its temperature and its humidity, whereas a hoop house typically is not, or does it in a passive way. Rainwater harvesting, another new use unit, and that's simply the catching and storing of rainwater for use at a later time. In the context that we're talking here, you'd imagine that would be irrigation. So, now, I'll, I'll quickly overview the standards associated with each of those new use units. For the new use unit, animal-raising chickens, the proposed code would allow that in all zoning districts with conditions. It'd be permitted in AA or agricultural zoning. It applies to parcels less than an acre. There'd be a maximum of six, six chickens on a parcel, where we, where we're going to require a shelter, that is, four square feet per chicken in size. We're going to require outdoor unpaved, access to an outdoor unpaved area, that's at least eight square feet per chicken in size. The chickens in there and the shelter are allowed only in the back or the side yards, and we have a provision on outdoor slaughter. There's no changes to the animal-raising provisions in parcels greater than an acre. The use unit for composting, these conditions are, are pretty small in, in number and fairly simple, but they're conditioned in residential and districts that abut residential, and the, that really the only conditions are that a co, a unit, a holding unit is required, and they need to be in the rear yard, and then obviously, no pests or odors, but that's not a change from the current code. So, the use standards for gardens, these are, these are grouped together, even though they're separate uses, and the, the conditions are pretty straightforward and simple, so I'll just highlight the differences here. A home garden, we, we just clarify that that is allowed in the front, side, and/or rear yards. For community garden, we'd like to see a sign that clearly posts contact information for the responsible party. And then an urban farm doesn't, doesn't have different conditions than that, it's just that it's primarily for commercial use. It may or may not include office space for workers and things like that as well. And then a roof garden obviously has the same conditions, just depending on which particular subset of garden it is. And then for all gardens, they may include greenhouses, hoop houses, aquaponics, they can conduct composting, and then a provision about nuisances, they can't attract pests, or be allowed to become weeds. Greenhouses and hoop houses, they're allowed in all, in all the garden types, as I indicated. In residential districts, they're not allowed in the front yard, and then otherwise, they're subject to the underlying zoning. And then finally, the, the last-
And before, before you-
I'm sorry?
-pass over that, when you say the subject that was, otherwise subject to the underlying zoning, hang that with respect to side yard setbacks and all of that sort of thing?
Yeah, the block standard, so if it found itself in 01, say, for example, then whatever the provisions for 01, as far as building height and setback and all that, would apply to the, that.
So, although it might not be, it might not be prohibited in a side yard, for instance, nonetheless, it has to meet those side yard setback requirements and so forth?
Use standards for rainwater harvesting, all, most of these, I think all of these standards or conditions here for rainwater harvesting apply to the, the storage container. It, it must be covered, we're going to, we want to require an inlet screen, and that's to prevent infestation of pests, and particularly mosquitoes in this case. In residential districts, the, the storage unit, if it's above ground, would be prohibited in front yards. That concludes the formal presentation of the proposed code amendments.
I have a question before you leave. I don't see anything about the number of rabbits you could have, or raising of rabbits?
Oh, yeah.
Or pigeons?
There's, there's nothing-
Was that another ordinance for that?
We did all eat chickens on this one, and we didn't do anything about rabbits, or goats, or other, or beekeeping, there's, I mean, there's a handful of animal husbandry things that, that could be included in urban ag ordinance, and this is kind of our first step in that direction, so if that comes up later, that might be something that we do.
Yeah, and then we have a protest letter that was speaking to, that there's chickens, I think it says, chickens are no troublesome than cats and dogs, and issues about the roosters, about, that you, this protest-
I think roosters are prohibited.
Yeah.
Roosters, Ken specifically addressed roosters in his presentation, I believe they're-
Yeah, I was just talking about the protest letter that was speaking.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the regulations being not more restrictive than on cats and dogs for the chickens. How did you respond to that? I mean, how would you respond to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was the, what was the specific protest?
It was, the protest letter states that pigs are no more troublesome to the surrounding houses or businesses than cats and dogs, and that they would like the restrictions not to be more than restriction on cats and dogs for, for chickens. That's, that's kind of the protest letter.
Oh.
They would not like to have more restrictions on chickens as, than they do on cats and dogs.
I see. Yeah, and that's, and that's perhaps a valid point. You know, our, our approach has been kind of similar to kind of the best practices and the research that we did, and, so the provisions that we have are basically, kind of reflect the average of how other communities have addressed the, the issue of urban chickens. So, I, I mean, I can certainly see that point in having, you know, treating them as pets, but that's not the direction that we're, we're going in this, in this example.
In that vein, Ken, I had a call, and the way I answered it was, it doesn't really have anything to do with this ordinance, because it talks about specific things, but it was about controlling animals, and it pointed out in here, you know, we're talking, we talk about chickens and hogs and everything else, but their point was, but you don't control cats, and, you know, you require my dog to be on a leash, but not, you don't control cats, now you're controlling, you know, other animals, and still no cats. So, why don't you put cats in here? And my, my response was, this is not a animal control ordinance, it's for another reason, but you might be, be ready for that if it comes your way.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Williams, I, I would say also that although, there is some additional restriction here in terms of the number that you can keep, or really more in terms of the kind of housing that you have to provide for chickens if you're going to keep them, you know, required to have a doghouse of a certain size and so on, but there are limits to the number of dogs that you can keep. And even with respect to rabbits, I think there, there is a point at which, and I couldn't tell you what it is, you know, you, you flop over into, you know, animal breeding, and that is something that's controlled by municipal ordinance, so, you know, cats, I think, as Commissioner, my, my seatmate pointed out, Spud pointed out, you can't control cats, that's the point, you know, so.
Certainly can't hurt them.
Well, I'm, I'm not lobbying for that. I'm just pointing out that, that, that issue was raised, and-
These are, they probably need to be addressed, but, you know, here. And the question that I had for you was about, one of the things that we had discussed at our planning session about this was, had to do with containing rainwater and whether we were going to try to place a limit on the size of a rainwater container, if it's visible from the street, in other words, if it's in the side yard as opposed to the rear yard. What, what did you all decide about that?
The adjustment that we made based on that discussion was that we restrict the storage, the above-ground storage container for rainwater to the side or rear yard.
But it, they are permitted in the side yard, so they, they may be visible. No limit on the size.
That's correct.
Are screening? No screening or anything?
No screening at all. We didn't, we didn't do anything about the, specifically screening, like a rain barrel or something.
Well, rain barrel is one thing, but one of your exhibits was that-
Tank.
Monster tank thing, it looked like it contained 500 gallons or something like that. That sitting in a side yard certainly would not be appropriate unless it was screened.
And I, I do think that's an issue, because, you know, we, we don't permit, you know, trash cans to be visible from the street and that sort of thing, and, and the idea that you could have a, a can for all intents and purposes doesn't look that much different than a, you know, 55-gallon barrel, you know, or trash can or whatever that's visible in the side yard would be of some concern to me. I think, I think maybe you ought to give some thought to that. My own issue, by the way, with respect to compost, if those of you who remember from the planning session, I had some concern about size and that kind of thing, and although I, I didn't get very far with staff on that issue, I finally went to other people that I know that actually do this kind of thing, I don't keep a compost heap myself, and was given some assurance that, you know, my concern was, I didn't want somebody to have, have to go out and buy, or build, or pay somebody else to build for them in order to keep just a small amount of compost, but my gardener friends finally convinced me that even a very little bit of compost needs to be in a bucket or a pail or something that would probably meet the definition of a container under this, so I'm less concerned about that than I was. of a container under this, so I'm less concerned about that than I was.
Okay, we have three people who want to talk to us. Yeah, two and a half kids.
Is she fine or she...
Right here it is. Pull that down, please, and give us your name and address.
My name is Johanna West, and I live at 4607 Southwest 29th Street. Oops, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say briefly that I appreciate you considering this, and that it came up, and all the work that Mr. Ken has done in bringing everything together, and I just wanted to be here to show support for that. And the petition that was mentioned with the wording that said, "No more restrictive than cats or dogs," was my own wording, and that's signed by my neighbors in Ward 3. And I believe that what Mr. Ken just brought up is a step in the right direction. I understand that it is more restrictive than some of the regulations on cats and dogs. And I also wanted to mention what Ms. Powers alluded to, that there are already allowances for rabbits in Oklahoma City, so maybe that's one reason it wasn't included in here. I think that's it.
Sorry, he makes me smile. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of Commonwealth and everyone in Oklahoma City who likes to garden and likes to eat good locally grown food, I'm just, I can't even express how grateful I am to be here listening to this conversation, and we're all very grateful to Ken and to everyone who has worked with him on not only making this happen, but making it happen in what we consider to be a really, really well-done way. He, Ken, and the people working with him have really gone out of their way to make this happen the way it should happen, not just slap something together where, you know, that maybe will, you know, will work for a year or two, but then, will, you know, other problems down the road will arise. So, I want to say thank you to everybody for that. The only minor issue that Commonwealth and I have with this is the compost holding bins. Many, many gardeners compost in windrows, which is just kind of a long pile, or in just a pile, and usually, it happens near the fence, against the fence, or almost against the fence. And that's just a really good way to do composting, and with all of the restrictions on what you can put into a compost pile that are in the definition of compost, you know, that you're not allowed to put bones, meat, fat, grease, oil, dairy products in, since it has those restrictions on what you can put into your compost pile, that it's not going to attract pests, rodents, you know, stray cats or whatever. And so, really, just having compost be in a pile or in a windrow is a super simple, you know, the difference between having your compost in a pile and having it in a holding unit is so small. Often, the holding units are just, you know, pallets or wooden frame with, you know, chicken wire or something, holding the compost in the unit, and just having a pile, compost naturally sort of, you know, stays in a pile, it doesn't spread out or, you know, make a mess. So, the only, you know, again, great, we're very grateful for this, we love everything about this, but we just have that one little problem with the compost holding units. And if people want to have their compost in a compost holding unit, many people do, and that's great, but if we could just have some consideration for not having the compost holding units, that's my only...
Before you step away, would you give us your name and address for the record?
I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Sarah Braden, and it's 1143 Northwest 38th Street.
Thank you very much.
Sure, okay. Any questions or...
No, thank you. Fannie Bates?
She had the lead.
Commissioners?
Well, just two things. Thank you, Janice. Regarding Janice's point regarding the rain barrel holders, that was something that I think we were a bit concerned, the rainwater holders, were a bit concerned about, about the size and screening of those merger units, and I agree with that point, I agree to an extent. The compost holding unit, I understand that from how it works, process, I'm somewhat in, I'm leaning toward her comment versus a requirement that you have a compost holding unit. That may just be, you know, a couple of bricks leaned up against a fence or something like that, but wouldn't, for some reason, for me, when I think of a holding unit, I think of one of those barrels or something like that, that they try to flog on you, that you really don't need to be an effective composter, frankly. It's just, I mean, they got these really cool pictures, and, you know, that really, you just need a place where it can kind of stay, and you can put some water on it, and it'll do its thing, so that's my only two comments. I think it's a good effort, actually, I'm pretty pleased with it, other than those couple of things.
Any other comments? Mike, hit them. Motion to approve?
Well, are we making, I'm sorry, are we going to make a motion to approve with those two caveats or changes, one with respect to, you know, my thing about the compost holding units was, I get that if you're keeping a lot of compost, it needs to be in something. So, my run at the staff was to try to get them to just define compost in terms of, you know, more than so many cubic feet of something, or whatever, whatever amount they were comfortable with, that proved difficult for them, so we have what we have here. I think, I understand that if you're going to keep, you know, you don't want half your backyard piled up with dead leaves and stuff, and that there's a difficulty in distinguishing that from trash. But I also hear, you know, these very seasoned and, you know, experienced gardeners saying you don't really have to have something, so I would like to see this move forward, I think it's a wonderful thing, I think it's a big step in the right direction. But I have concerns about the rainwater collection being visible from the street, either confined to the backyard or screened, one of the two, and I have concerns about this issue of, you know, how much compost is too much before it needs to be inside something.
Ms., I agree, the composting thing, and first of all, I would have to say I'm not a gardener, but I know people who are in it in a big way, and are very proud of their gardens, and they compost. And how most of them seem to compost is without some kind of a container, and that's why I am so reluctant to specify some type of container. And, you know, you made a point, we saw these wonderful examples, some of those on a much smaller scale are similar to what I've seen done out in the Texas Panhandle when they dig silage pits to store silage in, crying out loud. It's things you feed cattle. That said, I, you know, I would like to see a modification of that, and I thought we had, were clear on the rainwater issue in our study session. I'm disappointed that that is not...
I'll move approval with those changes. So, we understand the nature of the changes, Ken, are you clear? That'd be good.
So, the rainwater collection goes to the backyard, is that what was...
Or is screened.
Or screened.
All right.
If not in the backyard, we prefer that those be screened, especially in the front yard.
Okay, I understand that, and I thought, I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood from before, I thought it was just not in the front yard.
Yeah.
So, my apologies.
Screened from the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not in the front yard, or the side yard, if in a side yard, it's got to be screened. That's, I think, how we...
Not in the front yard.
Yeah, right. And then, you with me on that one?
Side yard screened.
Side yard screened, not in the front yard, if in the side yard, it has to be screened.
Okay.
Got it?
Got it.
We agree with you in the first one, we just added a little bonus clause there.
Thank you.
You bet. And then, with respect to the compost, we want to delete the requirement for a holding unit?
Well, or limit it to, you know, something in excess, I mean, again, I can see that if you're trying to keep truckload of compost in your backyard, it already be in something, but, you know...
I think it goes the other way.
It goes the other way.
The more you have...
If I have a substantial garden, and I dedicate the back corner of my garden, for example, to the compost pile, I have a lot of compost, okay?
Right.
And I rake it out into my garden. If I just have a very small amount, sure, I can do it in a container, but I can't very well compost enough for my good-sized garden.
But my concern about the small amount was, if you only keep five gallons of, you know, compost, why does it have to be in something?
Well, but my point is, if you have five gallons of compost, who cares?
So, maybe we just eliminate that provision.
I think the container provision is, I mean, we could indicate it as a preference, but not a requirement. I think would be a suggestion with that, because that, I think that'll get us, we prefer it be, but it's not a requirement.
Does lack clarity for our code inspectors, though, which has been the problem.
But I think there is that additional issue of it not becoming a problem for people, you know, if it's not becoming a problem for people, then...
We talked, if you'll recall, in some detail about what constitutes compost and what should and should not go into it.
I think that's where the enforcement will come, Nick.
That's where it really becomes a problem.
Right.
And if the inspectors encounter that, I believe they're equipped to handle that. If they're not, maybe we need to add some verbiage along those lines.
I think we're good on that.
I thought they were equipped to handle that.
Okay. Got it, Ken?
Yes, I got it.
Second?
Okay.
I moved, is somebody else? Can we go to second? Okay, let's go.
We have a motion in the second to approve item 26 as condition, cast your votes. And that's approved. We're now back to what, item eight?
Eight, nine. We are back on item eight, which is PC 10355, application by Joyce Vanel Pennix and Dwight Paul Pearson to rezone 3724 South Hanny Road from AA Agricultural to RA Single Family in Ward 4.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. We would still like to reiterate our desire to have this continued. I know my client has spoken to the protester, I don't know if the protester is now willing to continue it, but we would still like to continue this item rather than have it heard today.
We took that decision once already.
If the protester is willing to continue, would it change the commission's mind?
Mr. Mendoza?
Still here.
No, he's not willing to continue.
You know, this has been before us, and we've asked multiple times for the guy to do something, he, the density just isn't right. We pointed that out, he's refused to do anything. Now, all of a sudden, he decides, well, maybe I'll consider what they said. I'm with Mr. Mendoza, frankly, he's been down here the last three meetings or four meetings, more than some of us have been.
Yeah, he has better attendance, so...
I have, I guess, something I want to say about this. On the one hand, it seems to me like we almost need to decide this matter based on the fact that we're at the end of our patience or not. This gentleman, I totally, totally sympathize with his situation, and now he's sat through another one of these meetings, those benches are so hard. But, on the other hand, it's all, it's, this is, I guess, the lawyer and advocate in me, it's really kind of unfair to put Mr. Box in the position of having to come down here and actually argue this case when he was hired yesterday. So, it has nothing to do with him, or his abilities, or his representation of his client, or any of those kinds of things. I think it really comes down to, they've had enough continuances, and, you know, they haven't done what's in front of us now, has not done what we've asked, and therefore, sort of, up or down on that basis.
Further to that point, Janice, is there is an argument, knowing that it had been continued two weeks, why it's took two weeks to get to Mr. Box's office? I mean, he's just down the street.
Well, no, the point is, for whatever reason, didn't do it.
Right.
But the message we sent, and whether we continue this or not, Mr. Box, part of what I'm concerned, it's still the message, these applications with the density that you're proposing, don't work for me. It's just that simple.
And on the density issue, I think it's important that we're clear, there's two separate applications. The zoning application is a use issue, and the density allowed within RA zoning, the question of whether or not it is reasonable or not, I believe is, you know, is the task that we are, we're here to decide. And I think if you look at the decisions of this body, as well as the city council in the last, say, five years, the answer is, RA zoning, one-acre lots, is appropriate. And in fact, in some instances, if you look at PUD 1370, which is less than a mile from our application, that is 200 acres, that allow less than one-acre lots. And so, I believe where my client's struggle is, he is an individual that has done developments just like this in this area for several years, and if those were appropriate at that density, has there been a change in circumstances that now, today, the RA zoning that's appropriate immediately abutting this tract, it's not appropriate for this tract on 40 acres. On the issue of water, that has become an issue on several cases in Mr. Allen's board. Predominantly, there was, I believe, a 200-acre application that we had, and that dealt with saltwater seeping into the water table from oil and gas operations, as well as the lack of gallons per minute available for that development. Regardless of how big it was, the gallons per minutes weren't available there. Here, the water quality isn't an issue, the gallons per minute are through the roof, somewhere between 30 and 45 gallons per minute, far exceeds any regulation that the city has. And so, from our perspective, on the zoning issue alone, if RA was appropriate next to this, and more dense than RA was appropriate less than a mile from here, at the rate of 200 acres, we certainly think that RA is appropriate on the small scale that we have here when it abuts us.
David, the problem that I have, and I think maybe Nick has expressed it, is there's a sprinkling of RA in this general area, but it's mostly AA, and every once in a while, somebody sells a little strip of land, like this little strip of land, or the one that runs north-south just next to it. And I look at that, and it looks invasive to me, is the word I would put to it. It's just sort of coming in and breaking up in a little narrow strip what we have as generally AA zoning in that area. And what I think is overlooked a lot in discussion is, we are always looking at the application, the applicant, their property rights, what they want to do, with very little consideration for people who live in that broad area, have chosen that lifestyle, and the more you chip away at that, the more you change the entire character of what they've chosen. And to me, this is a case where I would not consider RA zoning, and I think we need to act on it, and if your applicant wants to come back... act on it, and if your applicant wants to come back with something different somehow with a new application, that's fine, but I at least am ready to go forward today.
You know, there's a couple of things, I think maybe we blindsided people with the thing. But number one, we have seen wildfires in that area like we've never seen before. And we've talked about sprinkling, and you've agreed to sprinkle here. Sprinkling doesn't do anything for wildfires. Again, we talked about water, and the email that I referred to earlier, we got 20 municipalities and 20,000 homes drawn from that aquifer. I think it's to a point that we need to reconsider. And I've talked in length with Councilman White, I think he pretty much agrees with that, and I think he's had conversation with Mr. Box, your dad, about the increasing the density of this kind of development. And, you know, we asked last time to reconsider and do something different, and we didn't get that. And, you know, I think it's going to take a lot more consideration than you're giving us for me to move this kind of an application forward, this way forward. I know that Councilman White is doing some work with an adjacent city to possibly get water in that area, which would help the situation. And density would be a little bit more concentrated, but at least you would have some kind of supply of water for fires and so on and so forth. And, you know, I don't know what else you could say that would change my mind on this application, but I'm going to move to the night, the application.
If we had two more weeks, I bet I could find some things to tell you that might change your mind. But on your point of the water and the number of municipalities, that, those numbers are staggering, but if you then couple that with what our water report shows, there's not a water problem.
I understand, and I live in that area, you know, I pump water, and mine runs about 45 gallons, I know what it does. And I've lived there for 12 years, and, you know, it hadn't changed that much, but the aquifer actually is going down. You have to drill deeper to get to that water. Whereas, you know, my well is only 120 foot deep, they had to drill a corner a lot five years ago that's downhill, probably 30 feet from mine, they had to drill 300 feet to get good water.
That's what my well is, 340 feet.
But, you know, like I say, on this application, the way it's set, I'm going to move to the night.
If I, and if I could, real quick, on the issue of the ordinance needs to change, that may be the case, the ordinance might need to change, but I think all you can ask a developer to do is come forward with an application that meets the comprehensive plan, that meets developments abutting it, which he has done, and that's why your staff not only just recommends approval, there's not a single TE. It's just a flat recommendation for approval because it meets a comprehensive plan, it meets a southeast sector plan.
I understand that.
And that's all I think a developer can be asked to do.
If we thought it met the comprehensive plan, we would probably be voting for it. Cast your votes, and it is denied.
Can we ask that the plat be held off until a decision has been made on the zoning case?
Sure. Continue it indefinitely?
No.
How about indefinitely, and then you just call us when you want it set? That way you control the timing.
That works.
You understand what we're doing, sir?
We denied the zoning request.
Okay, so our motion is to continue indefinitely?
Yes, item nine.
Go move.
We have a motion and a second to continue item nine indefinitely, cast your votes, and it is continued.
Thank you.
We're now to council committees. Counselors, Nick?
One quick comment. A couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to be down at the main fire administration building, and they showed me their sprinkler trailer, and offered to come put on a demonstration how sprinklers work, and bring that trailer down to one of our meetings or study sessions or whatever. They also have brochures about sprinkling, and I picked up some, I'll pass down if you'd like to see them. But perhaps that's something we would like to have staff work with them and maybe schedule for sometime, I think it'd be informative.
Well, I think that's a good idea, I think that we also need the Fire Marshal's office to be educating the council and home builders, and I've...
Well, they're apparently working toward that goal, also educating their own people. It had just come back from the training center for the new recruits going there, so...
Okay. Planning Department?
The Plant OKC Symposium on November the 1st, just to remind everybody.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Good. Development Services? Municipal Counselor?
Development Service.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We're out.